Hold on one sec.
I haven't heard what Scott.
I don't know.
No.
Your friend's on vacation.
Yeah.
We're just...
We're good.
Yeah, we're good. I did not hear. George's on vacation.
Yeah.
He's in Tennessee.
The only reason I don't bet is his wife's on vacation too.
I did not.
Nope.
Sorry, we don't need a quorum for work.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Well, thanks Scott. And then we can go ahead here, sorry. If you guys know where you're going to be going, you can just send me a quick text. Get out the streamers and... You ready?
Yeah, that's okay.
All right. We have a very full agenda tonight, so a lot of it is, we've been prefaced by you spending time prior to the meeting looking at things. So if you have questions, feel free to ask. Some of these I'm just going to skim over. First, we did have a nice recognition for the school district of Glendale City and the music department. Another one, NAMM, which is a NAMM designation, Best Communities for Music Education. And this was again another acknowledgement of the work that Matt Lamb has done along with Maddie and what they've built. So at the very bottom, he talks about what NAMM is, and it's the National Association of Music Merchants. So congratulations to Matt and Maddie for this recognition.
Yeah, there's like a thousand, I think, schools recognized, which sounds like a lot, but then when you think, what, 400 schools in Wisconsin as well?
Yeah.
So it's a pretty small group that got recognized.
I am finding that music education has quite a few neat little pockets for recognition purposes that I wasn't aware of. Certainly adds to his resume, so. The next one is, we already talked about this topic, but Jake Score put together as our A D. He put together an outline of what we're doing as coaches. And again, I feel like we're, because as coaches, we have a pretty good understanding. For example, like tonight, there's boys' basketball in for Olden Gym Tuesdays, our volleyball. Wednesday is football, where they go to Central Central. Thursday volleyball in Altoona. And then Tuesday, Thursday is baseball. And so track and cross country, they do a lot of individual stuff. I don't know if they even meet as a team, but they do a lot of different things in smaller groups. So just showing the board that we're all working together, especially with the change when it comes to contact days. Again, the only one that hasn't changed is the football piece. And then NIL, I guess it'll be interesting to see if that ever materializes here. I'm sure it will in some form, but there's definitely some rules associated with that. I think the biggest one you're going to see here in Glendalewood is if an alumni, assume not an alumni, but a high school basketball player, football player, volleyball player wants to put on a camp. And they offer that up. And then we have to address that, whether we allow it, who gets the funds, things like that. So it's kind of a wait and see. WIA is building the ship while it's sailing it. So we'll see what laws and regulations they come out when it comes to NIL. Any questions on that update?
Appreciate that Jake's thinking about it.
Yes.
Right, if we had volleyball and basketball, and the kids are in the same ones. Nutrition wise, it's tough, but we've got the lunch program going, but...
Well, the one thing that comes up in other schools is they've had coaches approach them and say, okay, now I'm working with my athletes. Kind of pony up and we need more funds. And again, for those coaches that have been in it, this is what you've done. You've never, this is how you approach summer, constantly coaching your athletes, putting them in leagues, et cetera. But now, if you want extra funds because of this, I know schools are having those conversations, so.
It works really well as long as the coaches are on the same page and all understand that we're all here for the same reason. If there is one that decides that, you know, my sport is a sport and you're going to be penalized if, then it becomes an issue. And that, you know, Mr. Sword kind of just wants to make the board aware of the change. And also kind of share the good news that everyone is working collaboratively right now. But know that that is a potential hurdle along with the camp harassment from the community.
I like the opportunities. A little hesitant that we're taking away so much time away from kids. You know, they are really having summer lunch because they're in every sport under the sun on top of working. So I'm a little bit like, when are we going to be like, okay, give them a break, you know? So it kind of makes me a little bit...
Huh? Gillette first to the second.
Exactly, yeah. You know, yeah. So it's getting me off, versus it's...
It's, it always has been. If you as a program want to be competitive, this is what it takes. And there is, there's different thoughts that are out there. And it's not easy, Joe. It's not, because we know we're asking, especially in a smaller school where we have multiple, a lot of our kids are dual, triple sport athletes. But in the same regard, when we're not winning, we're not being successful, you hear that other side. So it's a double edged sword and it's tough. And it really comes down to these kids making decisions, which they shouldn't necessarily have to, but they are. I don't have the answer, trust me. I've had that with this my entire career. Where do you find that balance?
I think it's a really hard issue, but I think also think that Glendale as a district is behind in that aspect.
Yeah, there's definitely some, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Where people were like, what, we have to do stuff in the summer? Well, do you want to be the bottom of the barrel? Make a choice, so. All right, the next one, I was actually able to talk with her via email, but congratulations to Ms. Raxler. It was great news to hear that she was named the state president. Ms. Birch invited her to be a part of our FFA teaching position. And she joined us for that, which was a great opportunity to hear from her about FFA. But yeah, this is a great acknowledgement for our district, for our community. She's certainly putting Glendale City on the map in terms of, not that we weren't there already in some regard, but this certainly shows what Glendale City kids are capable of doing. And looking forward to seeing her and what she does with her term this year. She'd be really mad if she saw that we put a big picture of her.
At the convention, there was large, like life sized cutouts of all of the board members, of the current board members. And so they each have these big giant cardboard cutouts anyway. Yeah.
My brother was telling me, oh, he picked hers up and started like...
Yeah.
Playing with it, and somebody came and yelled at him.
I would not be surprised.
He said something like that, that is a young lady represented in that, I hope you know her. I said, I do. So that's my...
Yeah. Molly's a fantastic, and I had the opportunity to go to convention. And the convention that they put on is incredible. And this isn't just about, it's not just about farming and farming animals. It's about speaking, and it's about technology, and it's just about the future. And it was really, really, it was a lot of fun. And she is such a talented young lady. It's fantastic to have her, which we could get her on staff, but she's got lots of big things to do. She's phenomenal, so. Hey, Max, you're welcome.
All right, the next one is a little from the grapevine. I heard it was a very touchy subject, and I can understand why. But the previous principal, prior to Ms. Birch, ended up painting over the class murals, which created quite the uproar. With that said, Krista, before they were painted over, was able to capture pictures. And one of the things that I would like acknowledgement from the board was some direction. One of the things that we're trying to do around here is celebrate our history in many different ways. And whether it's the front with showing some nostalgia, the community comments is kind of becoming our truly community comments. And so I think down this hallway, things get lost. So I'm asking the board, would they be interested in paying for, obviously the school paid for creation, and putting these very similar to the ones on the wall there, so they'd be kind of a campus? And putting back up to help celebrate the murals? I don't think anything's been done since 2018.
No, they have not done anything.
2019 was the...
That's exactly. So again, it's not, I'm not saying that we'll start to continue that. That will be a discussion and decision if Ms. Birch wants to put on that role. What I am saying is that this is kind of a history that it was there and it was certainly anyone pray from. We had each class created theirs. And if you walk down their hallways, that's, and that's where people stop. Krista, we were cleaning out a closet, she was cleaning out a closet in elementary, and there's a bunch of old photos. And if you've been on Facebook, you might have seen that summary. And from what I've heard, it's just people are constantly talking and, you know, reminiscing. And so again, putting these up would be a step in that direction in terms of celebrating history of Glendale City. So again, I wasn't going to make this decision by myself. Maybe it's something we don't want to resurface and have that come back, or maybe we do. So with the four board members here tonight, is that something you'd like to pursue, leave it?
I mean, I'm in it, so yeah. 2001, you know, it's a... No, it's terrible. It's a terrible mural. I would not ask for it.
I haven't been mine.
It's terrible. I think it's, I think it's good that if we do put some cans up, that we acknowledge that. I know there were a lot of hurtlings with that for sure, so. I know, I'm not close to it by any means.
No, I think there'll be some, maybe some, you know, some loss of detail in doing that, but that's okay.
Yeah.
No, I think that is a, would be a nice thing to do. And maybe there's something else we decide to do going forward. But I mean, it's, what, 18 years of... Yeah, and they're about 50 bucks a piece. So I think, right, Krista, 15?
They'd be, that'd be the most expensive one would be 50, 43.
And we have to actually put a little bit bigger just because of the details. But again, I am fine with whatever the board decides. I just didn't, it's been a discussion my first two years here, that these existed, what should we do with them? Should we bring them back? And that's, that's a board decision because of the turmoil that did create.
Reused by NAD, for the community?
Most likely, yes.
Krista, how big would they be?
The largest size would be 20 inches by 30 inches. So bigger than, bigger than those.
They're going to do the size from everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm formed in the back.
Did you get some samples to just paint it for us?
Okay, we'll pursue that and go forward with it. All right, thank you. Okay, the next couple, four, five, let's see, six. I'm going to have a budget presentation in the regular board meeting. Some of these will be the discussion, and so I wanted to touch base on these and offer up any details that you would like to ask. So the first one is our transportation fleet. If you're not, we're doing a lot right now this summer of true HR process procedures and cleanup in terms of making sure we have everything. For example, tonight, you're going to be looking at summary of our contracts and services. We, they were all over the place, and they were, you know, kind of a one stop shop, including our inventory for transportation. One of the, two reasons to bring this up, number one, are you familiar with what is in our fleet? And number two, we will be having to purchase a bus in the very near future. We had transmission go out, we had another one, I shouldn't say go out, we had some morning lights and so on. Ryan's keeping up with everything, but a bus in the tune of 120,000 is going to be a purchase that is going to need to take place here. So wanted to put that on your radar. Obviously, other than Derek, the board is familiar with our issues last year with the van situation. We didn't have proper size of vans, and so we had to trade those in based on state law. 15 passenger vans are not safe.
Why?
They're not safe.
So you can only have a max of eight, including the driver. And so we had two 15 passenger vans that we, were illegal. And then we traded those in for the Kias that we had. So it did cut down on our ability to transfer. But in the same regard, we're now legal. So again, just information, there's our fleet. And then we'll talk about, you know, as we go, because you will see budget line items to replace some of these as we go on a yearly basis.
Yeah, I think the gas version was like 120, the diesel version was 150. Does Ryan have a recommendation as to which one fits our fleet better?
Yeah, well, the diesel one struggles during the winter. The gas one gets better gas mileage, but there's, there's pros and cons of each. And then there's a variety of schools that have now gone to the propane ones. I will say at the convention, I met, we purchased some buses in 2023, and I met with the Bloomberg guy. Asked him about diesel versus gas. He said they sold three, or the only diesel buses they sold that year were the glances, so gas propane. So. And then we immediately had issues with the diesel one with the debt system, and it was out of commission for months because of the parts for them. So I'm a diesel guy, but I think it's going to have to be gas. Slower gas mileage, but the problems that you run into. So yeah, when it comes to that, that part, Ryan would say the same. The propane is a really a step even further. One district that is pretty known for the propane is Colfax. He spent quite a bit of time, he was kind of a big proponent, that then those were purchased through grant funds at the federal level. So again, a lot of stuff at the federal level is in question, so. But yeah, again, putting it on the radar, I'm not making any recommendations when I talk budget today about bus purchase. But again, these are all moving parts that will be in that decision process.
Is there a longevity piece to it, or I mean, is it...
For buses?
Do they reach, do they reach like a certain mileage and then for like a certain year or...
No, we'll, we'll run them to death.
Hell, it's 2000.
Yeah.
25 years old?
The biggest one, Steve, is when the state patrol comes in the fall and does their inspection. And then if we have some major problems, then it's usually where you start to think about what you have to do. I can say that if this does come up, I, it's a big no-no, but Glendale purchased a bus through Fund 80, which you were not supposed to do. So that's one that we're still trying to dig our way out from DPI's perspective. I have notes on those phone calls and said, don't do this again, okay? So one of those buses is, was purchased through Fund 80, otherwise the rest are through the normal Fund 10 process. Okay. Next one is, I should have put these in a different word, but this free summer meal summary. We had a lot of great opportunities here. It is done, because we just wanted to kind of tiptoe our foot into this process. I really want to say a special thanks to Jody. Jody stepped up with the resignation that you're going to be asked to approve of Tori Strong, and who has been gone since the end of May. Jody typically does a lot of thinking for us over the summer, and she stepped up in this manner to help lead this program so we could still offer it. I want to say thank you to Krista, she did the same thing. There was a lot of training and screen time required through spreadsheets, et cetera. And without Jody and Krista, this program would not have gone on. So special thanks to both of those. Jennifer Newguard was our career professional that was there and helped assist it, so a big thanks to her. And then Janice Monti filled in for Jody when Jody was gone for a planned absence. So I want to say special thanks to those four. But if you click on, there's a variety of pictures and also some data there. But then we talked about participant summary. So when you look at the overall summary, pretty substantial. When you look at breakfast, 1,243 meals, lunch, 966, with a total of 2209. There's 15 adults that came and ate with their grandchild or their son or daughter. Krista, anything you want to add? You were, you were around it quite a bit.
Nope.
Thank you.
The nice thing about this, because you're going to hear me talk about Fund 50. There was some, unfortunately, there was some mistakes with Fund 50, and we've been in the red the last two years. And it wasn't properly identified in that manner. So this actually is going to help us get out of the red when it comes to Fund 50. In addition to meal prices, which we're going to talk about, the reimbursement rate of this program is very... Um, the reimbursement rate of this program is very helpful, um, almost to the tune of five dollars, which is typically, um, very good program. But I think, uh, you know, for this program, the biggest thing was is we put food in front of kids, um, and kids that needed it. And so we do plan to expand this next year. Um, this year it was just a matter of let's see how we do it. Um, I come from a district that we did this all summer and it's a huge asset to your community. Um, and you could see in two weeks, this is how many meals that are there. So I think you can see the, the direct benefit of this program for our, for our school.
I remember, Greg, does this reimburse at the federal level?
Yes, yes.
Make a question.
So I, yeah, I hope you don't see it go away, but, um, I know there are some discussions within the Department of Ed that that is one of the, uh, shortfalls between that and, uh, wraparound or active school care. So we'll see what the feds do, um, with that topic. Very, very good, uh, success rate, uh, for the movement, um, to start. Okay, uh, we're gonna talk budget. Uh, one of the things I wanted to, again, we've been talking about this. And when we talk about the surplus, uh, that we will have this summer, um, that the budget, closes in about seven days, parking lots. Um, the high school, I've had so many conversations over the past, uh, two years as far as what conditions we have, what are we able to do? And, um, pretty clear, I would say, um, consensus in terms of our high school parking lot. It, instead of, if it was sealed properly, we probably would have been able to prolong that. Um, but unfortunately, it was way past and we would have been wasting money. And so, um, even the last, uh, two years by sealing wouldn't have accomplished anything. Um, so instead of thirty thousand to seal coat, you're now spending a hundred and thirty thousand to rip it up. And, uh, the rest though, I think we're able to, to save. Um, I'm getting bids on a variety, but there actually is new technology. So there's the seal coat. Then there's what you typically see on county roads, um, the city streets where they put the, the seal coat and then they put the little rock, uh, pillows on top. So I'm working with a company in Chippewa Falls, uh, with that. And then there's a new, a really new concept, uh, where they have a machine, uh, that goes over the top of the parking lot and actually reheats it and then it resettles. And the gentleman, and that's his, uh, comment, um, there where the infrared would, you would not have been happy, was his comment to Ryan. Um, it just wouldn't have, it wasn't in the proper condition to do that. So the infrared, it really isn't anything that we can take advantage of now, but future-wise, it might be. So I'm just in the phase, uh, again, once we have final, uh, book numbers in the budget and we understand, which is what we're gonna do later in the board meeting today, is prioritize. Um, this is definitely, um, so that we don't fall into the same position we are with the high school. We need to make sure that we do something with, um, the elementary, um, and some of the other areas. Uh, the high school is just gonna have to be a replacement and that's a planned replacement, uh, most likely next year. So there's a lot of different, um, information here, so I've just opened up the questions.
Community uses the parking lot.
It's something to be in the community.
Derek, uh?
They also use the grass.
So, what's that?
They also use the grass.
The grass, yeah. That's okay. I, I like being the bad guy. Um, but when it comes to Fund Eighty and Fund Ten, so the, the state guideline is if the original building or the original, um, purchase was through Fund Eighty, you're good. If it was purchased through Fund Ten, then you have to continue with it. Now, the exceptions are like a playground, um, and a weight room that is really truly community-based, uh, community, um, education, things like that. So from a facility standpoint, yeah, that's, it's a stretch. Yes, the community uses it, but we purchased it out of Fund Ten, or I'm assuming we did. Um, and then unfortunately, it is part of our daily usage. Um, so yeah, we unfortunately, and that's, that's kind of why we were stuck a little bit with all that, uh, fund balance and Fund Eighty. Um, we just can't do certain things with it, which I wish we could, so.
The way I accurately explained was if you need it anyway to run your school. So like a parking lot is something you're, you're gonna just have at your school on a day-to-day basis.
Well, if, if we were to find out that it was coded wrong or purchased wrong. It would have to be, Steve, like the inception, so like way before you. Um, and we don't have that documentation, so unfortunately. Um, we did try to, um, even playgrounds now, um, I think they felt sorry for us. Um, so when I went through with the, the state, I said, here's what we would like to do. Typically, and we had to go off of what DPI said. And so to Chuck's point, do you use a playground every day? Do you need a playground? Yes. Is it community-based? Yes. Can we use Fund Eighty? And that's the only reason that I proceeded with Fund Eighty funds for the community or for the, the playground. Because he gave us at the time, um, he assists with Donald, but as the DPI Finance Director, he gave us the okay. And I got, and sadly, he was on those calls with me, so I felt good that, yeah, we're not using it in a, um, inappropriate manner, so. So it, it, it makes sense to me to, obviously, let's do the maintenance where it's, yep, still appropriate. And then formulate a plan. So later, later in the meeting, you're gonna help me prioritize those type of things, um, as you may have seen earlier.
And, uh, that would be a capital improvement, so Fund Forty-six would be enough.
Correct, yep. Um, all right, uh, here's another one, um, that certainly has passed its life. Uh, we have staff computers. And, uh, we've been working on a replacement plan for this, um, pillar. And Frank and I have met quite a bit in terms of creating a, uh, replacement plan for Chromebooks, but also for staff computers. Um, unfortunately, time is not on our side. And we have staff computers that, um, Windows ten is going to expire in October of twenty-five here in the fall. And so we really don't have a choice with this. So you'll see that, uh, later on in the meeting. I put this as kind of number one because, uh, we just can't go without technology. Now, with that said, um, years ago, for me, um, I made the decision I wanna continue with it. Um, desktops are not a universal machine anymore. Um, they're kind of a waste of money in my eyes, in terms, unless it's like a CAD machine or something that needs to stay. But we need to provide our staff with some, um, ability to be flexible, to take these things home, to work where they need it to be. So, um, what you're gonna see are the updated quotes for these twenty-two machines so that we can get them in the hands and replace a variety of desktops that are obsolete and then will expire with Windows ten. And we would like to, uh, do this, um, this, after this meeting, basically. So, um, we will come to the, um, later on, again, from a priority standpoint, um, if we talk more about that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
So the, the, uh, you're planning on replacing everything with laptops? Are you gonna have docking stations and monitors and desks and free to the laptop?
Yep, um, Marko's did include that in their quote. And so again, uh, we're not asking you to, um, tonight, we're just asking you to prioritize. Um, we would still be able to use, because we budgeted, uh, we're able to do a variety of things, including budget, E-rate, um, and C-S-ten through our technology contract. And so, um, but the Marco quote does specifically talk about, if you look at the paragraph, that's from Frank, where it's including the docking station. And then the other ones are just regular, um, computers where we would have to purchase docking stations in addition. Any questions? Okay, uh, the next one is a radio replacement plan. Um, we have a variety of handheld radios, um, that are losing, um, its life. We have some that we would like to add, um, to the mix. Um, if you've ever gone down the radio path, um, they, they seem to have the market corner where it's kind of all or none, um, depends on some frequency and so on. Um, they seem to change the models and which then we need to add some different licenses and so on. So long story short, this comes down to safety. Um, I will say that this is not a priority right now. Um, the computers and the parking lot, in my recommendation, are more of a priority. Uh, we can live along, but if we do, um, in terms of making a broader investment, um, we have to get to the point of making a choice. Um, and I think Jamie is short, how many? At, at one point, she was counting like between, what was it? I thought it was like five, six. Um, there's a variety of that are out of date. Uh, we have a host of radios that are, seem to come from like four generations. Um, and so the replacement costs are there to make sure that we have. Um, there also is another priority, which I'm gonna get to in just a little bit, like our P A system. That's more of a priority than these handhelds. So again, um, putting everything on the, the docket in terms of these are needs that we have. I would say the radio is more of a lower, lower, um, need at this point. But it still is a safety component that we'll talk about in the near future. Any questions on that?
What was, what's the, what's the primary use? Is it mostly, I mean, we're just finding ways to connect with, I'm in the office and I need to reach the bus garage?
Yep, so there's, there's a couple of different scenarios. There, number one, yes, the buses, uh, with the repeater and then when they're out. So they connect to the main, um, um, not only offices, but the main transportation individual. Um, in-house, um, it does come down to safety protocols. You know, if we have a fire, um, if we have, uh, a bomb threat, if we have some type of safety situation. Um, from a special ed standpoint, um, if we need a student, um, and corral a student because they're, um, they just need help, whether it's, um, restraint or there's just a situation where we need more staff, yeah. We do line downs.
Doesn't do that much.
Um, we also have, um, playground, you know, because it's immediate. So there's, there's just a lot, uh, custodians use it. Um, one of the things that we've had here that we're changing is everything was on one channel, which is not conducive. Um, I built a plan in my other district where we have sixteen channels, which is the capacity of a radio. And each channel is designated. But then your number one channel, um, which we put at the bottom, so it wasn't accidental, was the emergency. So if there was a lockdown or if there was, you know, like last year, we had the fire or if there was something, uh, active shooter, everybody knows to go to that channel. Um, and it's only certain radios. So it might be just admin. So in every radio, we actually had, uh, Rostback Communications go through last year just because I didn't trust that they were where they needed to be. Um, and then through that evaluation, they're like, wow, you, uh, you're gonna run into some problems here very shortly. So there are some radios that have lost this year, um, and it's just starting to compound. So we need to put this on our radar, uh, but we're, we're not, it, it hasn't reached that higher priority. Unfortunately, we have a lot of priorities, um, but this doesn't reach towards the top. Any questions on that? Okay, um, the next one, we're currently having discussions and, um, when it comes to snow, obviously, we're six months of winter where we live here. Um, we're at a threshold where we have to make a decision. And that decision is, is that do we look at contracting or do we look at an investment into some heavier equipment? Um, right now, we really struggle when it comes to snow removal of over five, six inches. And, um, Voiceville was recently in the same situation. Um, again, I come from a, a situation where we contracted and it was very simple because we just didn't invest in the equipment, um, which you guys know. I mean, we live in winter and it depends on who uses it, how they use it and so on. We have a plow truck that is ready to, uh, ready to die. Um, we have some other investments that we need to make in the bus garage and in the garage area altogether. Um, in our budget process, um, again, we're exploring what does contracting look like? We're having discussions with Harvest Hills. We can handle, you know, the three-inch type of snow, um, with our current equipment. Um, but we don't, we really struggle with those others. So, um, this is definitely one that we could discuss as a board, um, whether you think the investment should be on staff, um, because it takes person power, it takes larger equipment, um, which is not cheap. Um, from the standpoint of contracting, it's roughly a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred an hour. Voiceville was paying two hundred and twenty-five to Cormican. Um, and they have, with their referendum that they just approved, they actually pivoted and, um, spent money on equipment to get away from the contract. So there's a couple of examples right there. Um, talking to Greg from Harvest Hills, obviously, there's a commitment on his end. If he has equipment sitting here and just waiting for snow, um, there's times where, um, you know, we have a lot of snow and there's times that we don't. So we're just having all of those conversations, um, in addition to the staffing. We got hit really hard, um, very unique, but very hard this year with F M O A in our custodial area. Um, so when it came to staffing, yeah, we were really pushing people, um, unfortunately. And there's just not a lot of subs out there. So this is definitely a conversation that I wanna continue to have. Right now, the only thing I'm looking for is, is that, do you want me to continue consulting, um, or conversations with, uh, contracted services? Um, because I told Greg I would call him after the board meeting today, um, and say, yes, we're interested. He, he's not sure how the numbers would work out. Um, he has made comments that it would probably have to be an all or nothing just because I can't afford to purchase or rent, um, or lease large equipment and not, you know, fit only in some, some snow, three inches. So it, there's a lot of up and down here.
We use Harvest Hill for both of our businesses and I will tell you that they are phenomenal. Like, I'm like, I have staff that come in at six, two and ten, I need that driveway cleared and he's always been on top of it. I mean, I've never once had an issue whatsoever. So, you know, to have that peace of mind, I know that that was great for us. It was worth it.
That's, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
Is the one seventy-five to two hundred per hour, uh, for, if say if they had three pieces of equipment in here? Is it for piece of equipment or are they just gonna have one? They would just have one. Okay. Well, I should, I don't wanna speak for them, but that's, that's the tone of the conversation was yes. Because like, Hiawatha Bank, um, National Bank uses them. And their, um, baseline is if it's white, we want it gone. So even if it's a half inch, they're on it. Um, and again, I said, well, what about our situation? Because if it's less than three inches, we don't need your help. And that's where we had to talk further. So I guess I'm just looking for direction from the board where, you know, if he does say, and there's not a lot of contractors out there and there's obviously a huge difference between Cormican and him at the time. I had to put together an RFP on this, but is that something that we'd want to explore? Otherwise, if it's not, then the larger equipment purchases are going to be a need.
So with Harvest Hills, do they talk about also clearing your sidewalks and stuff like that with that cost?
Uh, we haven't got to that point.
Okay, and they don't, we don't have them do that part, but they do give other prices.
Probably would for two hundred dollars.
Right, when they usually go to some places.
In New Richmond where we contracted, that was not. They only stay in their vehicles where they, so that's typically the building custodian's responsibility.
Do we have a cost breakdown of what it costs a school right now per hour?
No, no. I, I just, uh, yeah. It's a tough question. I don't, I can't even tell you based on what has happened, what the, what it costs as an educated child, much less break it down into mechanical pieces. So, we're going to get to that point, Scott, right now, I couldn't tell you. I, I could, or I can tell you that the equipment part is just, it's on that verge where we really have to plan. And if we don't plan, we're going to be in a pitch and say, all right, Greg, we need you to come for whatever you want to charge them, so.
Do you have a best guess for what the equipment is going to be cost, or going to cost if you replace it? Just an idea?
Uh, well, right now, we're talking about one plow truck. And Ryan and I have not even talked about like, what would that look like? We have a tank cab that doesn't have the right tools and the attachments to do what we need to do. You know, we had tournaments this past summer, this past winter where I, I probably spent from six o'clock to two o'clock constantly. I, I just spent the whole time in the truck while we had the tournament. And it was based on, because of the equipment that we had. And that was a Saturday. So, no, we haven't broken down to that point, but I can, and were you here when we went through the fleet?
Yeah.
Okay, so go back to the transportation fleet document, you know, talk about, you know, what we currently have, but it's, it's pretty, it's outdated and the truck is, I don't know how much life it has left.
You know, and I, and I could see a situation where like the small loader tractor, the Kubota I think it is, that when it's time to upgrade that, you upgrade that to a larger machine capable of moving snow.
Sure.
Which the one they have now is not. And I heard about the work truck, I've written it a couple of times, yeah, it's a little, mine belongs on farm. So, but, you know, I don't, I don't think there's anything to be lost in a, in a conversation with Harvest Hills. Like, what does this really mean? How many snow events do we get a year, you know, on average? Kind of trying to get a number on that as close as possible. I think it's, you know, something on that.
No, but the, the biggest one is kind of the all or none. And that's where I kind of need the direction of the board where he wasn't a real big fan of the partial just because of his cost. So, if we do go, and I don't want to waste his time either. If we go down this path, it, it's truly going to be the all or none. Like, if we have, I mean, maybe we still have the ability if it snowed and we needed to make it safe for buses to just load kids. And I don't know, Jody, how they handled that. Like, if you were in the middle of a day, like, do they just drop everything and, or do they wait for the snow event to be done and then they drop?
For our up top group home, they'll come multiple times a day. For the day program, because we shut down it, they wait till.
Till it's done.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then I'll, they'll drop there. But up top, he's sometimes up there three, four times a day.
Okay.
You know, but it's not a big parking lot, it's, you know, going through with this truck and some of that.
Right. So that's the biggest question I have for the board is like, you know, to continue these conversations, if he wants to go down the road of kind of an all or none type of thing.
It's not really all or, like, he wouldn't come if it was like one inch, right? We're talking there's a, the lowest amount.
Well, I, I threw out three inches. I said, under three?
Yeah, I don't think it comes for sure under one.
I said, under three, we can take care of. And that's where it was, well, you know, then it's my cost and it's the machine and do I, can I afford to just have that thing sitting there? And I said, let me, let me talk with the board and then, then I'll get back to you.
Does, do you want to even take care of dummy minutes?
We, yes, they are responsible for the building and the parking lots.
Who would pay?
And we just pay the rent. It's just like you rent a, rent an apartment, they're responsible.
My opinion on this is if somebody can make money doing something, we can save money by doing it ourselves.
And he, he made that comment, Chuck, he's like, that, you know, please, no, I'm not making money. You know, I know, and maybe he's, he's a business, but.
But, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have a good plow truck. You sure have two units here at the school that can plow snow and you need two guys to sit it.
Right.
If we have those things in place, then I think we can do it ourselves.
Good.
And with a plan to replace, what makes it weird?
It seems like if we had a, had a winner like last year, we probably would have paid them a couple thousand bucks and had everything done and saved ourselves the expense of a new plow truck and having people on call and everything that comes with it. It just depends on what the weather is.
And really slippery parking lots last year. Oh my God. Yeah, we'll spend some time.
We don't have a ton of cash, right? I think the cash that we have, we're trying to get to the referendum. So, it seems like Voiceville had a model that worked for them where they did the costing and paid someone to do it. And then when you got the referendum, we built it into it and now you've got your equipment paid for.
Yeah, but, you know, from a, from a Kubota, you know, when Ryan and I were talking about the equipment, the Kubota, we spent quite a bit last year because we had individuals very hard on. Since rectified that, the plow truck is, we had two plow trucks that we can push snow and, yeah, they're, we need, it's going to be in front of you one way or another. That's basically it.
And right now we've abandoned Janet Curtis staff.
Correct. Ryan and then Janet or custodial that comes right away in the morning. And then if it's during the day, then it varies. And then if it's on a weekend, it might be a, a board member or it might be a basketball coach or a superintendent or, I don't know, Marcy. She only drives, she only drives big equipment.
I know how to drive the plow truck, I did pop.
I don't know if we've given you any clarity right?
You haven't.
Yeah, so. You want that.
I need that, yes.
Okay, so.
For me to appropriate and budget, like I said, we can live along, but in November, I might come to you and say, you know what, I need eighty thousand for a plow truck. Why wouldn't, why weren't we talking about this? Well, we are now.
Well, and something that's been brought up already is, is how Voiceville backed Bill with plowing until they were able to get a referendum. Is that something we would want to consider and just say, you know, this year? Do you have it done by someone else and see how it is? Are, is he asking for multi-year contracts or is this a year-to-year contract?
No, we were just approaching the conversation and that's where it was. You know, I threw out three inches or less, we would need help. And that's, and then we started to talk, wow, that, that won't work for me. But then he, actually some of these other numbers he gave me because he was part of the bidding process for Voiceville.
I mean, on the low end for a brand new twenty-five hundred Silverado, you're looking at three hundred hours of plowing. So, that's a long time going along to see if we can get a referendum in a year or two to help us purchase new equipment. But then you brought up the fact that stacking is, is difficult. You know, it's one thing to have custodians and other people who can do it during the week, but I don't think it's our superintendent's job to be plowing snow for six hours on a Saturday. I mean, even though you can do it and I'm sure you're happy to do it, is that truly your, your job here at the school? So, I mean, if, if we, if we look at having someone else do it, looking at the ROI and how many hours you get based on our cost for custodial staff and equipment, it kind of seems like it's a, it's a, it's a win-win in today's economy and then see what happens in the near term.
That sounds good. Okay, yeah, go ahead and continue the conversation with Harvest Hills.
Correct.
Well, and Harvest Hills. Like, like anything, we will, we will have an RFP process, but I'm just, like I said, exploring it.
He's never called in sick for me, he shut off every day, that helps.
All right, all right, that's what I needed. Policy, policy and procedure, that's all right. There is an update, here's what's going to happen. We, this week, we finished through, last week, excuse me, through the seven thousands and nine thousands and I only have the eight thousands left. And so, what's going to happen is, is you're going to have, I'll have an update for you in July. We're going to finish the eight thousands and we're very close. You're, in July, you're going to have the first reading of the policies. In August, you'll have the second reading and then you'll have a resolution that will adopt all these policies. And that's a big hurdle that we've been facing. With that said, because this did come up in a conversation with a board member was, well, you know, basically you were the one that was sitting in the room doing this. And what if we don't agree? You always have the ability. My job right now was just to get us to a baseline. We were so uncovered in so many situations, there's a baseline. If there is now a policy like, whoa, that's not, we don't agree with that. That's where you bring in us more to say, we want. Because you, you heard this at our WSB training a couple of weeks ago. You're not going to read through all those, those policies. But as things happen, that's where you're going to be like, oh, we need to talk about this. Or I may bring it to you based on state legislative change or whatever the case may be. So, the only other update with that is, is David Popko needs some hours and he's going to be assisting me and we will have an employee handbook ready to go in August along with our student athlete handbook, the middle school, high school handbook, the elementary handbook. And now we will have an employee handbook.
Do you want to continue the rest of the administrative reports or are you going to leave that?
If you look, I don't need to address the, the last one, the service contractor we talked about. One fifty, I'm actually going to talk about in my budget update. The flood, I will talk in the, the budget update too. And then there's a list within the campus of what we're addressing for facilities. So, a lot of this stuff, again, is you don't need me to insult your intelligence by reading it to you. It's all right there and you can go through.
Okay.
The only other part in there was about the health insurance.
Oh, yep, and I will talk about that in our budget.
Okay.
But again, if you look at the, the main piece there, that is a, it was not good news.
Okay. So we'll move on to the regular board meeting and at this time we call the school board meeting for the school district of Bloom City quarter. All members present except for Dr. Lisa Kaiser and Mr. Jordan Barnes. Were we able to do our financial audit, Steve and Joey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I had the, a couple of checks. One was in regards to this thing called Simply Good Food. I wasn't really sure what that was, but apparently it is a subscription, is it? Or menu planning software that they use for resource department, I assume it was through the jerk tour?
Yes, actually she never even used it. We approved it at two meetings ago.
Okay, so were you with that for next year?
For next year.
Gotcha, that's pretty cool. And then that was for three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight. Is that going to be for the entire year or is there not going?
That's an annual, annual expense.
Perfect. And then the other one was for Oak Ridge Chemical, which was for eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents. And that is a whole lot of forestry work. A lot of chemicals, cleaning supplies, stuff like that. So I thought that was a really high amount, so I think that's all for the summer.
Yes, yep, it doesn't include the, the gyms, but it does include all the classrooms.
Yeah, well, then we'll see that I hold.
I asked that to, let me look at three months, the expenditures by any time, kind of, um, this is a selfish. And now basically I was, because of the issue that we had with the bus a few years ago, I wanted to make sure that Beth Grantman was getting used properly and not being more or less charged against her for the budget. And get it to my child and explain all that.
Yeah, a little update on that. We currently, it has not been appropriated prior, that never saw budget. I mentioned this last time, here not never saw budget for five point seven. One of the things, there was a quoting error that was taking place in terms of where some of those grants were situated. So, it's a process and Deb and Beth have met a number of times to try and rectify that.
She said telling you the process, right?
It is a process, yep.
I know that Beth has told me that she had not been doing the crew programs. And I don't know, this is seven, eight years now she's been doing this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody else? Okay, Steve and Scott are up for next month's board audit, so please plan accordingly for that one in July. All right, so the ECSD Board of Education meeting format.
I put this on the agenda now that our new board members have had a little experience with a couple of meetings and wanted to ask the board as a whole, what format you were going to continue. Do you want to continue with the, with the work session prior? Basically, we could do it however we really want. Sometimes I think, I know these ladies for sure get sick of listening to me, you know, and repurgetate some of the things that we talk about in the meeting. So, wanted to offer up the options to the board. How would you like write down the calendar? Because this has kind of been a conversation that we needed to have.
So, what I've gathered is right, it'd be every other month we do two meetings and then the alternate, alternate one, just one. Is that what you're?
The one that I had that seemed to go well, but again, that, that was the previous district I was in. I'm not saying, but I did, I can say that my, the previous board really liked the fact that, you know what, on this work session, the only thing we're going to talk about is facility. And instead of my admin team, you know, Ryan is sitting right next to me and we go through everything facility wise. Maybe Walt's here, maybe Mark and Johnson's here, whatever it may be. If it's technology, Frank is sitting here and is just focused on that instead of kind of some of this randomness. But when I asked the board, the previous board this question last year, they said, you know, we'd like to talk about these topics. It gives us an open chance to talk about them and ask questions, which again, I'm fine with whatever you choose. I just wanted to be clear, like, do you want to see a change? Do you want to keep it the same?
I guess my question would be is, so you have your technology meeting, you defied, say, February. When it comes to June and we have something like on the work session tonight about computer replacement or radio replacement, that you still address those? So that would, we still have the committee meeting or the work section, I should say, to, to address those or is that a, a, become an agenda item in the regular board?
The best way I can describe it is a, you know, like a regular meeting is like a PLC meeting. So you hear us talk about PLCs. And one of the things that we always talk about is. And one of the things that we always talk about is let's not have a, you know, where we talk about field trips and all this organizational stuff. The regular monthly board meeting is that. It's the business side of things. It's the approvals, it's the hires. That's what a meeting should be. And it, it should be about forty-five minutes and you run through it and it's done. Um, obviously we're in a different situation here based on what has happened. Um, but the work session is where, yeah, our presentation is just focused on technology. Now, can it come up in another realm? Absolutely. It might come up. You know, you're not ju, it's not just there, but for one time during that year, like that is just the focus. Plus it gives, you know, an opportunity to hear from Frank. Um, when it's the financial, Deb would be sitting next to me. Um, because if, if Frank, Ryan and Deb were here tonight, they would just sit here. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be really involved.
I also like the idea that, that, that meeting would not have a hard end time at six thirty or it could take as long as you need.
Yeah.
That's always been my, it is kind of, I don't know, you know, bugaboo is. We have a, maybe the deadline is good, but you know, it's like, you wanna be able to discuss as long as you need to without a deadline.
So the other question I'll address though is, okay, Patrick, you know, these topics in the work session, like when do we get to know these? I would send these out on a Friday update. That, that's, you, you read it at your own leisure. And then in addition to that, I would always meet with my board president. We'd go through the agenda. And actually Chuck and I did that, um, last week when he knew he was gonna run the meeting, which again, is a WSB. Um, it's just good practice. Um, every Friday I sent an update to my board and they just read it at their leisure. Um, and then, uh, when it comes to the, the board meeting itself, yeah, I've heard this stuff. We don't sit here and talk about it, regurgitate it. So again, I, I'm not saying that you did it wrong, but I'm saying that there are different ways to do it.
Could we get a, could we get an example? Have a, have you run one of those meetings? Have a work session where you have a, a topic?
Oh, absolutely. I ran it for seven years in Richmond.
Exactly. And just, we have one. We sit through one and we see how that goes.
Yep.
And then we can make a decision on if we wanna go forward with multiple times a year of having that type of meeting.
Yep.
I think that would help more to show us exactly what you're talking about rather than.
I can send you the presentation. Um, it, what I do is, is I send you this Google folder and it is stacked full of data, um, evidence, um, examples, things like that. Let's just say it's facility. You know, then we go through our ten, or a five, ten-year facility plan. If it's IT, yeah, we're talking through our replacement plan. It's, you know, it's just some of those. And I have examples right now that I could send you. For us to do one, like to the other part at the end of the year, we would literally probably spend two hours on the annual performance survey. We would talk through the goals and just those two items would take up two hours easily. Um, just so that you can really dive into those, because that's students and that's staff. Um, so yeah, I mean, I, I can do, however, this is like Subway. You can build your own.
Yeah, no, I prefer that more of the focus on the sex builders. We have the presenters, the experts. I think if they ask more, I would do, we'd know a little bit more of the how and why rather than having you transfer it from the experts.
I, I do it just that one, I agree, and I would like to see that. Um, one thing that we've talked about is, is how, what's the term clarity creates competence? Is that what you like to say? Um, is, is there, do we believe that we are in a position as a board where, where we can go to that model without? I mean, is there still clarity here for the public to, to know what's going on or what's happening? That's just my only, if, I, I think there very well is, but, um, you know, that's just my perception on the board. Am I, does that really says what I'm saying? You know, it's like, oh, you got new radios. Why did you even talk about that? You know, well.
Well, that's why I think the Friday emails would be very helpful, you know?
Yep. 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 So.
Hear that.
So Chuck, I use the word transparency.
Transparency is.
There you go. Creates confidence. But in the same regard, yeah, the Friday. And I started to when I first got this job and then it was like, we did this at a monthly meeting. I mean, it, it takes time. It takes me a good two to three hours to put those things together, um, throughout. So it.
Okay. So let me rephrase my question. Can we still be a transparent board under that model?
I think it'll give us, instead of ending at five thirty and saying, oh, we're gonna jump back to it at maybe further down the line or at the next meeting, maybe we'll get all the information we need at one meeting. And then if people in the community come to us and say, hey, you know, what was the deal with the radios? We're all gonna have that knowledge.
It's a time base, your objective base.
Right. And, and we won't have to turn around and say, well, we've talked about that.
So then if that is the, the, the direction, then basically work sessions will go away and then the board meeting will start at six thirty and then go from there. And again, I'm still, I am putting a lot on the agenda right now because I'm doing what you said. I'm trying to build that, that trust, that competence. There's a Friday, you know, if, if I'm still here in three years, there's things that I will not put on the agenda that I currently do because they just don't belong there. Um, case in point, when we, when you guys settle on the, uh, policy, uh, we put the threshold, because right now there was no threshold. I put the threshold of five thousand dollars. If there's an expense over five thousand, it has to be approved by the board. Well, I hope that, uh, I believe I put a threshold of ten in policy. You guys can change that. But again, you know, there's not, you can reach five thousand very quickly. And does the board need to do those things? That's what my job is. Um, so that, that's, that's an example. But again, I, I'm good with whatever's decided. I just wanted to have a conversation.
You know, it, it might just, uh, theoretically, I guess, you know, with an update coming from you and then the opportunity to ask a question of Patrick or of the board president in the meantime, um, you know, and any further clarification on anything is easy to get. Uh, just, it will, won't necessarily be in public forum, which really I, I don't know, I just guess I would just wanna make that point. But I do like the model of the twice a month that you have been proposing for the last couple of years. I think, I think that is good.
I agree.
And then summer usually is a, it's kind of an off period just because families are so busy. You know, June, June, July, um, are very much small, very, um, shortened. We don't have work sessions just because families, take a point tonight. You know, we have two individuals on a vacation. I'm sure we'll have some in July. August, yep, we're ready and ground running. So when would you like to start this? And then I'll put the calendar together. You wanna start it in August?
August.
Okay. Alright, I will put the calendar together and, uh, I'll put it on next agenda. Do you want to have a work session? Um, well, yeah. So we, no work session on this July. Because I'll start with the updates.
Okay.
So when's our next board meeting in July though?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Sound good? Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Derek, can you give us a, an update on the CISA eleven?
Well, you had promised it would be the nicest day of the year. Jody promised that they would treat you well. It was pouring rain when I left and I had quick trip cookies to eat. So. It was insane. I was, I had less expectation here, catering here.
Times are tough. Times are tough. I'm sorry. That whole fried chicken, this is terrible.
CISA eleven, yes, it was good update. So Brandon Robinson, uh, he runs the tight ship. It was a game evening. So we re-elected, uh, Jack Redmond who's in St. Croix Central, uh, to continue. That always seems to like it. They've done a good job. They got a twenty-six million dollar budget for this year. And, uh, they continue to save as much money as they can by not getting involved with the, with the trips. It was good.
Really, it was good. Yeah.
Good cookies are good.
Sorry we hyped you up so much. I don't think you would have gone if I would have told them that. They weren't gonna give you stuff.
So the, the next item on the agenda is from the, uh, the June twelve meeting we had with Bruce Quentin about the, from the WSB with the little board training. Um, Dr. Kaiser was a little late and Scott and you weren't able to make it that night. Um, but if you look in board docs, there's a presentation there if you wanted to. Um, I, I thought it might be interesting if we could just briefly, very briefly, say what, what, something that we, we garnered from that presentation from that night. And I'll start. For me, I, I like what trust is important, but bear it. That's kind of what I got. Um. Jody?
Um, I mean, the last one that I had already learned because I did this training as well when I first came in. So it was just a really good refresher of remembering our roles as the board versus in roles as superintendent.
Yeah, I thought so too. I thought the, the labeling of what we are responsible for and what we actually responsible for. We understand that I would just assume that it was your job and not, and all of this.
Yeah, it was helpful. I mean, it's always nice to have another person's perspective that you have that's familiar. You should have had it. Um, there's obviously the overlap between the role and responsibilities, so it's great. It's always nice to have another resource for that name also.
So yeah, Scott, encourage you to, if you get a minute, it's, you know, pretty straightforward, but some, some good, good information there.
So just, you can have that. Do you get a, do you have a work list that I'm on for?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't scroll down to that. You can grade it?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so at this time I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Jody, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Derek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion, period. Agenda is approved. So this time, uh, it's open form procedures. Anybody in the community have a comment? Okay, we'll move right on to the consent agenda. I've been grabbing my second page. I'm gonna go off the computer.
Oh, it's on the back. I, I will say, and again, it's not, I'm not questioning it. You don't have to read each one item. That's something that they've done. The consent.
I am not gonna be reading every blank item.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
That's not illegal.
It's not. It's, the consent agenda is a consent agenda.
I'm trusting.
Yeah.
That, that is, okay. So at this time I will entertain a motion to, is there any questions on anything in the consent agenda? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Derek. Send you a second.
Certainly.
Second by Steve. Any, any questions, clarifications on it?
So if, if I could, I just wanna point out a couple of different things. So we have support staff, hires, resignations, extensions of contracts, um, et cetera. Um, some of them, um, there are, obviously the details are in the resignation or the letters of hire, et cetera, that you can read. Um, in terms of, I wanted to outline the summer food contract is in there. Um, we've talked about all these others. There's donations. I wanted to clarify the donation part is even if you, somebody in the community truly donates five dollars, we're gonna put them on there. I think they deserve the recognition, um, no matter what is given. Um, so you'll always see those types of things, um, in the, the policy, um, to do that. Um, I wanted to bring to your attention Gigi. Um, this is where, again, as the planning goes forward, uh, for joint band and acquired performance trip. Again, you're not approving the trip, you're just saying, hey, yes, you know, we're gonna be okay with you starting to put an agenda together. Uh, they have a rough outline. So again, there's gonna be a lot of different things that are gonna come up. Um, in terms of the MM, I, or actually LL, let's go back just because I had to pass over. Um, you're aware that we had a flooding situation. And so unfortunately, we are not going to, uh, reach the threshold when it comes to insurance. Um, but there are some good things that are coming about it. Number one, um, the, we have narrowed down, um, and fixed the, the overall problem, which is the black backflow preventer in our boiler system and hydro pipe. With that, uh, I do have some good news that I got right before the meeting. Uh, we have to replace the flooring, which we had to take up and we had to test the floor. And thank goodness, uh, there actually was black mastic, or we thought was black mastic, and it tested negative. It was the best thing ever. So we do not have to abate. Um, Jamie has really enjoyed her time outside of her office. Um, but we are now on track to get everything done. Um, I did wanna outline, you know, carpets plus, which you just are asking to be approved. Uh, we also ran into a situation where, um, and I wholeheartedly agree, um, the orientation of that office doesn't make a lot of sense. And if you were part of that planning, I apologize, kind of, um, it just was poor planning, especially with training. So, um, we are actually, it now is the time to do it. I told Jamie, I said, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. Uh, we ended up taking a wall out and putting up a, a different wall. If you saw the specs, the state approved it without going to, uh, to get a, um, approval at that level. And, um, it, what it's gonna do is offer up a true conference room for Jamie and her staff. She didn't even have the ability to meet with more than maybe two teachers that could fit in the corner of her office. And that was very uncomfortable. So now she's gonna be able to meet with, um, even two greater levels possibly. Um, so even though it was a pain in the rear end, um, there was a good thing that happened out of it. Um, the other one I wanted to, uh, is MM. Um, if you remember the cost of these doors, the door itself, um, is probably with the jam, it's probably a three to five thousand dollar investment. Um, we're looking at custom graphics, uh, that height. If you went walkout tonight, if you look at the storage door, that's, uh, across from the gymnasium where the gymnasium doors themselves. Um, I had multiple quotes, as you saw, in the, uh, board docs. Um, so we're really, um, and the, the designing phase is gonna be with administration, but it's gonna be, again, not specific to what sport plays in the gym. It's gonna be all encompassing. It's gonna be arts, athletics, academics, et cetera. Um, the other one, NN, that is the wax cards. For whatever reason, we had one car that you could only fill up in Gladwood City. So we had people taking our vans, um, trips and they had to use their personal credit cards. We're trying to stay away from all of that. So we're actually going to a fleet guard of wax, uh, which means you could stop at any gas station and it goes on the school account. But we also will have a process and a procedure behind that. Um, so, uh, SLP, um, I did want to, again, this, because this is a bigger budget item. The total cost of SLP, um, this is no, um, knock on Aaron, but the overall cost, when we start talking about what are we gonna offer in SLP, um, if there actually exists in person, um, it's gonna be a lot. And it's gonna be off the chart of a typical teacher contract. Uh, because right now you can see what the overall cost is and it's much higher than that. So if you, uh, see an agenda item in the future and you're wondering, well, we used to always have an SLP on a teacher contract, that's not gonna happen, not in the next five years. Um, so we have to understand that, um, knowing that, I think, Aaron said that the SLP process has gone relatively good virtually. good virtually, but I think we can only agree that's not best practice. So I wanted to bring that cost to your attention. E-rate, same type of thing. Um, so just a couple of things I wanted to outline, um, as we talk about it later in the board meeting.
One more question with the IQQ, the group of Cool Air. How did you decide today which contractors were gonna use for different services?
So, um, depends on the overall experience, I would say. We have a maintenance agreement and Krista has done a great job. We had contracts that nobody even knew we had. It it was rather embarrassing because there was contracts that have rolled over because nobody's paid attention to them. So we put that in one overall. You can actually link, you can click on the link into it, um, later in the agenda. Right now, we have ongoing relationships with certain vendors, and so we would rely on them. I can tell you that one of the contracts I'm very happy to keep to be done with is NAMI, uh, North American Mechanical. We had a fire up in one of the rooftop units and they could figure out, and they were the ones that installed it. And there was insulation that was flammable. It was just a, I wouldn't call them for anything. We actually ran into Cool Air, and it's the first time I've worked with Cool Air, um, when I first got here. And they were tremendous to work with. Scott, Neil Scott, uh, he, uh, just a tremendous guy. And, um, I I didn't really know him. His kids go to Richmond, so we we connected that way. He worked with Marcy before I got here, um, in Tim's absence, and he he would go up and beyond. And so when it comes to Cool Air, I trust him. And that's a lot of the factor that's taking place. Now, we are gonna go to RFP for our mechanical, so NAMI will have a chance to go, Cool Air will have a chance at it, and so on. In situations like this, where we had four, um, waterfalls leak, like hundreds or thousands of gallons, burn up our floor, get Jamie a new office, whatever it may be, you gotta go with somebody who would trust. Now, that's a big number, but unfortunately, we're in a situation where I need somebody I can trust, that they're not gonna BS me and say, you know what, let's get a little, let's get a couple more thousand out of this school. So I don't know if that answers your question, but a a lot of it goes with some of that experience and that trust.
Yeah, I'm just thinking when we get the the policies and procedures developed, I'm wondering if we wanna go to or some type of, we've got the request for quotes, it sounds like, but just making sure that we, if there's people even locally that we can use, I mean, I'm looking at their dollar rate, and I'm thinking there's a ton of local that are a little cheaper than that, where it can save some money. Now, right quality work might be different, but if we've done the due diligence and said, well, policy says we go out and we get a quote, and we validate, and you get a letter of recommendation, we know we can trust them, right? Because we've got all of these procedures in place. So that's the only reason I bring it up is just to make sure that we've got a good solid.
No, that's a good question. Uh, it actually came up with local concrete. You know, we had some local people that were interested, and they they had a very comparable bit. But when when we made the phone calls and looked at recommendations and at the extent of what the work was done, it was obvious that anyway, we need to go with that, right? But I would agree with you where, you know, there is, and you will have policy. In policy, there will be processes and procedures of how you get to this point. And what the board needs to follow, and obviously, you always own the right to make that final decision. It doesn't always come down to cost. It comes down to those other subjective factors too. But to your point, yes, we wanna make sure our local people get a chance at this and know that we're not just gonna skip over.
Yeah, they might win and they might lose, but yeah, at least so here's how we did it.
Can I just ask what we do have open up for any professional positions right now, like teachers? We have, I mean, besides, um, to, the, 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 but.
Yeah.
Could we fill in now?
We have a, we have an interview on Monday for our last opening position, but seventh and eighth grade ELA.
Okay.
After, after we talk a little bit more tonight about options for Spanish, and we'll have direction there too.
We also have, um, school nutrition coordinator. We have those interviews on Wednesday. Krista and Jody Volz and myself will be conducting those. Casey Noldy will look to fill that position. And then we have a custodial position that is out there. Aaron, you don't?
I do not have, um, actually, I believe we have two.
Yeah.
A para, and then you'll want to post for that, or when I just, I'm gonna contact.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Now we are on to administrative reports.
All right, um, I have started off with a picture from one of the more recent, um, Hilltop or Hometown Field Trips Mary Park. And they were actually in this picture, um, celebrating a friend's birthday, um, on one of their breaks from, um, having fun at the park. They are averaging right now for summertime anywhere from 45 to 50 students per day. And that is just the Hometown Group, not the Tiny Talk Group. And they are definitely keeping busy. So on the weather days that they have not been able to get outside when it is a little bit not nice, it is definitely a little bit louder downstairs, I would say, Jamie. I'm not down there as much, but.
Yes, but it's a very good energy. I love it.
It is, and you know.
Having a blast.
Yes, and let me tell you, the lunch program has made a huge difference. Um, and I was only in there a couple of days to visit, but I I would agree with you, the energy was amazing. I actually had a couple of parents, I definitely saw that number of 15, uh, the parents or the grandparents. I had a couple wander from, because they were meeting for lunch. So they're, where is it? And they're like, wait, I hear them. I think I can find them. And it's like, go down this hallway and just keep going towards the sounds. And I actually walked one, um, woman during the day, and it it was pure joy. Because I think, you know, it's not a regular lunchtime. It's a summer lunchtime, and they were all having a blast. And then you mix the summer soul into it, and it was, it's a good vibe. But they were definitely enjoying themselves.
And my highlight with them is the, when the ice cream truck comes on Fridays. If you ever have in a bad day, come to the elementary school on Friday at 1:30. It's their excitement.
They got it.
Oh, it is. Yeah, and they're just so excited to have that ice cream truck come, and it's amazing.
It is such a treat.
And I'll just commensurate that to the few staff members that won't miss the Friday afternoon.
For that treat, yes. And ever since she planned that, that has been an ongoing Friday tradition for many. So that is just one of those, I I wanted to say that side benefit, right, of Friday afternoons? Um, I try to avoid it, but I would go down just for the enjoyment of the kids and that, um, that absolute summer, um, ice cream schmear, maybe we'll call it, because it's inevitable that one of them melts and drops, and you know, we gotta catch back up with that. Yes, so they're definitely enjoying the time. Um, I know Beth's email last night was, or yesterday afternoon was, well, there's no more lunch program for the sixth floor, back to breakfast, you know, and and that. And it's, it's a great thing, that program. I just think they so enjoyed it. But they're also already right back into their routine, and they have it. It's just, they enjoy it, and they're right back into it because she has such a routine with all of her staff, even the student workers, the kids even know it, um, and they're utilizing everything very well, so. Um, next thing is the access test results. So we have six participating in the access test. Four with ISPs, um, and the overall scores range from 1.8 to 3.9. So that could be because, um, one's in their second year here in the US. Two, um, they may have been in English speaking for a very long time, but on that access, they might have tested at a, um, 6.0 in listening, but in writing, they might have tested a 3.5. So their overall range is at a 3.9. And to test out, they need to be, um, at that 4.5 to a 5 to be tested out of the access. And, yes. Access is for any English language learners, English language, um, that may have, when they came into our school, they had put on their home language surveys that they were speaking something other than English, English at home.
Okay.
So anything that could have been Hmong or Spanish speaking for us here at.
So, so if they pass the access thing, in that, that means they, then what? What is it? How does that change their status?
So they pass, they would stay on monitor for two years to show us that they are fully capable and in, um, able to do all things.
They understand what's.
Understand academically and this, everything is, um, at their standard range for all areas. So they look at listening, um, listening, speaking, writing. And they also do a mix on the access where they combine two scores, so ELA in writing, or sorry, reading and writing. But we have kind of a span where some of our surrounding schools have a lot, a lot bigger population. Ours is a very small population, and about two, yeah, two years ago, we had one family, they're like, we should have never marked this on our home language survey. They speak English at home. But there are a different, or a Hmong family at home, they speak, or they're, they speak English. So they don't want their students to have ISPs because they'd already taken the access because of the state statute. They still have to continue to take the access. So this is also one of those reasons that that score is a little bit lower. The student doesn't have an ISP, they are, have to take the test. Those two students are like, we really don't wanna take this test. Like, and we've seen that in some of our other tests, right? Or they're just not in the mood to test. They don't wanna do it. They're at that point of, we're overtested at this point because there's, the state is saying that we have to do this. But overall, the ones that are doing it for the fact that we need this because it's good for us and we're learning from it, and this is how we're tested on it, have made really good gains and improvements. My next thing on here, the graduating class of 2025 exited eight students from our special education and 504 caseloads. That's a pretty significant number when we're looking at this. And when I look at that, that number, I think, okay, so what's that going to mean for caseloads? And looking forward, because we have that 12th grade class exiting out, and I have a new classes, we have new classes coming in down at that lower level, right? That 4K class coming in. So automatically, my mind's transitioning in, looking at those caseloads coming up. And I transition into the next year, my fourth grade going to fifth grade, my fifth grade going to sixth grade, and automatically making sure that my caseloads, all of our caseloads, are making sure that we're meeting all the students' needs. Factoring them in with their peers, their teachers, all the support that they're going to need. So I'm moving right into that 25 and 26, and we're looking at it as a special education team. We wanna ensure that all those students have that access. Not only with the correct teachers on the correct caseloads, that they're equal. And so we're kind of making the, making sure that every year that they have that snapshot, we do a snapshot that tells about all of our special education students. That gets transferred to that next teacher, that gets shared out with who it needs to be shared out with. But then they transport, transfer it to that next teacher, and it gets updated with each IEP or each evaluation. We wanna make sure their accommodations, their modifications are up to date. But we're also proactively looking to make sure that all their needs are met and updated. If that means that at the end of the year, we're looking at, hmm, this student might need more help because they're making a pretty big transition, whether it's, um, elementary school to middle school, middle school to high school, where is that looking? What do we have to change? We make sure we have those meetings before the end of the school year so we can plan for that next school year and make sure that that's all set and ready. Or if something even happens over the summer that we're updated on, we have to kind of look and say, okay, is this case load? Is this student right for this case load? Is there any adjustments that we have to make so that it's the right fit all the way around? So we're trying to plan for that at the end of the year, but if there's changes, we're meeting in the summer to make sure that it's, gets done. Some of the other things that we look at, and I just know that I have to plan for, is to continue to monitor all of the evaluations and IEP processes, not only for our students, but to make sure that we're in DPI compliance, because that's something that since I got into this position that we've been really working on, keeping up and making sure. And I've been working with the staff on, and they've been working with me on because we are all together as that special education team that we wanna make sure that we're together.
How often does a student get dismissed from special ed services?
Depends on what level and what their need is.
You have a couple a year, or does it, is it more rare than that?
Speech and language, a couple a year.
Okay.
But then we usually gain a couple a year.
True.
Mm-hmm.
True.
Um, and if it's, um, yeah, it all depends on what they're working towards. If it's like a reading goal, something like that, and it's early enough that they are found very young, and we can get it and work up, we can usually dismiss, hopefully, I would like to see, you know, by that third, fourth grade, but all depending.
Yep.
And then move on, move on and out before middle school would be ideal.
Is it more common for an IEP to change?
Yes.
Than for them to be outright just like, where you've achieved this goal, but still gotta achieve this goal now?
Yes. They would be updated and monitored and move on.
I think one thing.
Yes, and they should.
Yeah, right.
You should be meeting those goals and setting the goals.
I think one thing that was evident here, and I don't know sped like easily, but it was pretty evident that we were not identifying students early enough. And so putting those processes and procedures in place, um, in terms of, like even my first year, um, Aaron and Marcy would talk about just the lack of process and identifying those kids to get the help that they need. It needs to start early, getting early. That was, there was, I would say a lot, there was a long short form. So I know this summer too, since we're on this topic, we actually are paying bodywork to assist Aaron and come through because our student sped files are kind of in disarray. And so they have to go through each one of those files, just because, very similar to our staff personnel files, the right documentation is not in there. And there's hundreds, probably about hundreds, but more than a hundred.
There's, yeah, there's a hundred and thirty roughly. So that's a specific thing that we're looking at, so we'll keep moving forward. And that's one of the reasons that, you know, looking at that specific PD for the staff and development, looking at, I want to be able to kind of focus on those certain things as we go.
Any questions, sort of, Karen? We're done, right? You're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Jamie, you there?
Yeah, so that could be, I could have a good segue kind of into part of my report, picking back off of what they were all just talking about. So, um, taking a look at kids and identifying them at the lower levels. Why are they struggling? Is it truly that they potentially have a learning disability of some sort, and they're not identified yet, or is it just something's wrong with our instructions? So when you look at the data wrap-up there in the Title I Spring Planning Meeting, that's all of that data review and that information that we, um, have implemented this year as far as, uh, data with the RTI program, taking a look at the student scores. Where are there, where is their growth? Where are strengths, weaknesses? Why are Where are they? Where is their growth? Where are strengths weaknesses? Why are they getting it? Where seems to be those common denominator things? So we have done it three times a year this year for the data, um where we meet and review the universal. We just met again in May. So what that does is we take a look at all that information and set up our groups for the fall. So what students are going to be getting academic support in reading, academic support in math, and then official interventions. Once we put students into official interventions, that's where we start tracking them to see um with that intense distraction if they're making gains or not. If they don't continue making gains, we change the instruction, we keep products monitoring them. And then at the end of a process, we say, okay, we've done all of this, it's taken about a year, they're still not making those gains. Then we are okay to have that data for our special education referral. Um so that kind of wraps in all of those pieces. The notice for the Title One Spring Planning Meeting, that's a requirement that we have to have um because we're Title One schools. So under S up, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. We have to have that meeting and I have the presentation link there. So sometime take a look um through that presentation. But one thing I do want to point out within it is um this year I did a full needs assessment with multiple data points for the grade levels. So instead of just looking at FastBridge data or AIMS Web data on the kids, um I brought in like for example, my um presentation that shows um for kindergarten, recognize twenty six uppercase letters, recognize twenty six lowercase letters. Because those are our benchmarks, our expectations. Sound production, classroom performance. Sam Delik on slide sixteen. So this is all the data that we pulled together to look at to see if it's working with these kids, which are kids that are struggling, which kids aren't making it. So instead of just looking at one piece saying, okay, they didn't make benchmark on AIMS Web, you know, it's pulling in multiple pieces. Uh yeah, so this is kind of was neat to see the kids across the bigger span. Because we don't really want to judge a kid on one, one piece of material. So we did that for reading and math in students during grades K through five. So that was branded us. And then the next one, I think we're done one more slide and then I'm actually going to add stuff. There you go. That shows all the results um of the highest need in our elementary school for academics. So our current first graders who will be going into second grade have our highest academic need. And those scores are all weighted scores that I showed you on the previous sheet for calculations. That shows us a breakdown of where we need to have our highest focus of need of where our issues are. So this just kind of pulls it out for us. Um then it goes all the way down to four K where you can see it's the lowest level of need for our reading and math.
So quick question.
Yeah.
I guess it's a quick question, but maybe not a quick answer. When you have identified like a, a, a grade or a class.
Yep.
How do you, is it hard to determine or how do you determine whether it's, well, either just happens to be an extra three or four sped kids in this grade or we have a problem maybe with our materials or some teaching that maybe needs to be adjusted? How do you, how do you regulate that to figure out what that bias?
Where the issues are?
Yeah, how do you?
So, so a couple things. So with all of this, I include all students and I include our EOL students, I include our sped kids in it. Um once we get that data, we say, okay, well, this student does have a learning disability in reading. So like is reading score is going to be a struggle. So this is kind of a little bit of an outlier for us, right? Um but if you look back um to slide six, Patrick, it shows kind of, and again, this is an older model, but we're still kind of on it using it because it makes sense um to us right now. But your tier one instructions should be working for what eighty percent of your student body. Uh that's your core reading instruction. So we start to look at if we have grade levels where there's more students than eighty percent not making gains and you're fifty percent of your students, it's a core reading instructional problem. It's a core math instructional problem. That's one of the things that I was able to kind of determine fast. And I've had conversations with the team here as far as, okay, we shouldn't have this many kids struggling. We shouldn't have forty percent of our students struggling in reading. That's a core reading instructional problem. So that's why this year I brought in High Grade Phonological Awareness in grades K through three. Next year, I'm bringing another reading program, UFL, which is just phonics based. Because those kids aren't getting the core phonics instruction that we need. So um that's kind of how you have to start breaking it apart is looking at those specifics. Does that answer it?
Yes, yes, it did. So there are, there are benchmarks that are just clearly kind of defined.
Yeah, yeah, and there's always wiggle room. There's always, you know, you always tend to see a class at the higher level of need sometimes more than other classes. They're just, they're like that kind of every year, you know, you kind of have those ups and downs. You have really a high seating class, you know, but when you're looking at the general piece, you can kind of pull out those trends, right? Um so again, looking at ours and these numbers, to be honest, they're, they're kind of consistent to where I came from with, with the amount of kids. You know, when I first did that, and I think when I did the needs assessment, when my results came back here, it kind of solidified. I thought was like, okay, these numbers are pretty consistent to what I see. You know, that one seventy seven score isn't extremely high. I've seen that of same data points for a grade level be up to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. You know, so again, it looks alarming like, wow, that's one seventeen, but in reality, you know, it, it kind of balances out. So it really just depends on the group. And again, this prioritizes us to make sure, which is funny, I love it because it solidifies what I was already saying. Um where our needs, I, I've said all year long, our current third graders are struggling. They're my biggest priority and concern. That's one reason why we've kept them as three sections going into fourth grade. Um that was kind of that bubble group. Um and again, this data that we did showed the exact same thing. You know, so again, it solidifies what we were already seeing, but yet it helps determine. So again, according to ESSA and um the federal law of how the programming works, we have to make sure that we are servicing these kids are our highest priority. I can't put all my services and funding down to third grade math because that's a very low priority according to the needs of our current building. Does that make sense?
Three third graders, not two third.
I, yes, there's, yes, there is, there is. And it was funny because I think I'd missed kindergarten. There's an air. Yes, one kindergarten. And it's so funny because in the meeting they called and I was like, oh, you're right, they did. So yes, I forgot to.
So that bottom one is actually kindergarten reading, kindergarten math?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
I think this also leads to a broader conversation of what we, I think what the first thing we talked about is that admin team um was moving that third grade at the time was first grade into three sections. And so when we talk about future involvement, you know, you're going to get to the point where you decide, okay, is it two sections or three sections? And I think we've talked about in terms of. Do we have a, you know, we have one school counselor. Do we have from a mental health standpoint, a behavior coach, instructional coach, things like that? Um I'm not saying, again, I think the term you used drug triangular. I mean, Jamie and, and Marcy, they'll tell you and, and Erin, when these decisions are made, they're not just using one data point. They're using multiple data points. But again, I think, I want to point out that the third grade, because you're going to have to make these decisions in the future where we're going to have sixty kids in a class. And is that worth another ninety thousand dollars for a teacher? I would argue yes, because we want the base to be as strong as possible and put our eggs in that basket. So again, just when you look at this, I'm not saying that that is the reason the third grade is there, but I would say it's one of the reasons.
How many third graders are there? How big is that group?
Oh gosh, I'd have to look at six, three, I think, or I'd have to look. But that was a group, like you said, was originally kindergarten, they were two sections. First grade, they were two sections. And then Patrick moved down to three sections in second grade, three sections in third grade and kept them. And that, again, absolutely can have a factor, especially if they're a little bit lower of a struggling group also.
If they would have started off three sections where they should have been in kindergarten, first grade, which are the most important, the most reading standpoint? I'm not saying you, I would say you would see a difference.
You would see a difference, yeah. It would still be, yeah.
For sure, you can't, you cannot be as individualized as you possibly would. For me-ish kids in a class, kindergarten.
Class size isn't the biggest factor against achievement, but it is definitely.
Would you say it's a higher um behavior approach?
Yes.
But I will also say that even think of a lot of those groups, they were also some of the groups that I had when it was only the two sections in four K, so it was a lot bigger class sizes also.
Chuck, you're asking really good questions. And I think, you know, when you, when you want to know how, how we determine where they are and then also asking those questions about special education. Um this is the way, this is the path in which a student goes into or stays out of, yeah, special education.
Oh, and that kind of leads me into the next question I was going to ask. How long does it take? I'm sure very student by student, teacher identifies or her score identifies for this kid, let's put them in RTI.
Yep, yep.
I know that's a process, it's right in the name. So then to get them into sped, how long does that take?
I would say a, a good year.
It's a year.
It's a good year because what we really hope is they don't have a learning disability and we're just missing something with core instruction. And we just bombard them with an intense instruction and then from a lot of the kids, for a good fifteen percent of the kids, it works. You know, it's that five percent that it doesn't work for, then we go, okay, there's something more here. But we really need to rule that out before we sit here and say, well, this kid isn't getting it, they've got to have a learning disability, let's refer. So about a year. Because I do um typically one tier two intervention for eight to twelve, ten, or eight to ten weeks. And then two tier threes, kind of what we try to do.
And in most cases, they can't legally qualify for special education unless you, right, unless you have done those interventions and you've proven that you have strong core instruction, like, yes.
It has all been done.
Yeah.
Yes, which I'm sure you've heard about.
Well, I know.
I'm sure, yeah.
But I've never asked that.
Yeah. And I think too with this, like you say, okay, it brings up, like I said, the reading things that we've done, we've, we've implemented. And also too later in the, I think it's the, one of the action items or whatever for math. You know, why we need to beef up what we're doing for math. You know, these are all the things that it comes off, comes back to.
So when, but there's a kid who's struggling, the first reaction isn't a sped referral necessarily.
Or even RTI.
It, it's what can I do in the classroom?
Yes, correct, that's tier one.
And, okay, tier one is in the classroom. And then it's, uh, is there a referral process for that?
Yep, so, yep, so we have, um, I've been working, I've got um a handbook that we follow for RTI as far as that process goes. So.
Does that go through you?
Yes, goes through me first. Um and that goes through those data meetings like I was talking about where teachers have to. We have the initial data there, already have those names targeted, okay? Then teachers have to, as we go through them and say, okay, this kid's here, you know, what are you seeing in the classroom? Yeah, I've seen the same thing or no, that's not accurate. And we start there as an official process as far as identifying them. Then I ask them, okay, what are you doing in the classroom? You know, I'm in there making sure that that re-instruction is taking place, that they're following the curriculum that we have prescribed to. Um and then monitoring that um what they're doing with it. But then also too, before they'll even get to an intervention, I have to say they have to have an academic support of some sort. Whether that's during our Hilltop Rite time or sometimes if they already have that, then it will be with um one of our interventionists, but not even labeled yet as a tier intervention. It's just intense academic support. So I try to give them a lot of those benefits before, you know, that we're trying to get them what they need before we start the official process. So.
With a successful process like that, you should, if it's working right, I mean, you should be able to cut those sped.
That's the, yes, 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 yes. Because we don't want to misidentify a kid. We don't want to say a kid has a learning disability when in reality, we just haven't given them the proper instruction that they needed. Yep.
Yep. And that's why it's so important to look at these scores repeatedly and make sure that your staff is well-trained in the core curriculum that they are supposed to be using. Because that they're, yeah, and have good core, good core curriculum.
Yeah.
Because you can't, how do you know what it is? You know, that was your first question, how do you know what it is? If you haven't, if you're not all consistent, if you're not all using the same thing, if you're not all using the same thing consistently. So it's really hard to pinpoint that problem when you can't um have that guaranteed viable core curriculum.
Fun, exactly, teachers, they could usually be like, they could point to who they know that, if, but the data would support that. Okay, I'm asking a wild question.
No, it's all good.
And here's another one, Chuck, where um it wasn't happening was the six week term. Uh and what I mean by that is, is we would just let kids kind of flounder through the process or back the process. And then at six weeks now, it's like, okay, this isn't working. So now you got to pivot. And that pivot was not happening. Um and pivot is now happening, like this is plan B, this is plan C. Um and then not just say, well, they're just in the program and we'll just let it.
But this, that's other guy and well.
Yeah.
No questions on that. How, how does the needs assessment results of this compare to what you see in the FastBridge trends?
So, yes, and I, so the trends I would say, because this is, this is five, three to five points of data per grade level. Your FastBridge trends is just one score. You know, um so again, you're going to see, I would say they probably would need, um, if you're showing, because I know that the third grade, if I'm remembering correctly, the third grade is a flip, right, they struggle. You mean just with this, with overall, you're saying?
Yeah, would you get, would you say that FastBridge would tell you a similar thing or would, would, are they contradictory? Would you see the results of the two?
I would say. I don't know. I, I would say a little bit, yes, because again, like what I said, as far as what I see with our current first grade going into second grade, our current third going into fourth, those are definitely our highest, highest needs. Um but, you know, when you look at that, that's kindergarten. But yes, see like for this, for kindergarten, so we have to use AIMS Web Plus for K through three because that's a state mandate with Act twenty. Um, okay, you look at your first kid over there that's blacked out for AIMS Web, early literacy. They scored in the first percentile for um on ACT or on AIMS Web Plus. They have eleven out of the twenty six uppercase and ten of the lowercase there. But then you look at the kid below, twenty one out of the twenty six uppercase and twenty two out of the twenty six uppercase letters there. So that, that shows that they're really, really struggling on FastBridge or the AIMS Web according to this. Whereas here in our benchmark data, it's showing that they're okay. They're not as low as what that universal screener assessment is showing us. Does that make sense?
So this might, so this might give us more precision.
Yes, this, yes, because again, it's multiple points of data. I personally don't even want my own kid judged on one ACT score. You know, if you're going to judge my junior daughter, I want you looking at multiple things on her, not just that one ACT score. So that's what these needs assessments allow us to do.
If we're looking though, if I'm looking at if FastBridge matches, you know, one of the things that we wanted to up our goals were typical or aggressive growth in our students. And if I'm looking at math, um you've got sixty nine percent of your sixth graders were typical or aggressive in their math growth. Growth, so sixty nine percent of second graders. Third graders, however, were at fifty three percent. And so there is that, you know, that does match the, this might be a bunch that's struggling.
Oh, yes, yes, for sure. Yep.
Trends are the same one. Trends are, I guess, same of the two, but.
Yeah.
Gives us one.
Yeah.
You all, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, oh geez, okay. Uh the rest of mine is just a bunch of nice pictures in celebration of the end of the year of stuff. We were pretty busy at elementary school. We had end of the year um dance and field day, um which was amazing. It was awesome to see all of the volunteers that came for field day. I've been involved in probably four different district field days over the years. And I'm not just saying this, that this field day was by far exceeded anything I s- um just the age appropriateness of all the activities, the keeping kids busy, right down to how many, how much time they spent in each station. It wasn't too much. Um I think I saw maybe one little behavior thing I had with a little guy and that was it. Um it was a very, very good day. Um so Patrick also part of in the um.
This Jeep.
But he also took, yes, um so it was, it was a good time, very, very awesome to see that. Senior walkthrough was something Marcy and I did together um this year also, something new where we um kindergartners through the PTC grant. I think I've mentioned that they got um cats and gowns, so we took the opportunity to dress them all up at the same time. So my littles walked with her seniors just through the elementary school, um but it was awesome. And it was neat to see the seniors and how good they were with the kids. Marcy said they're all worried about, like, can we hold their hands? What do we do? And it was. So kindergarten graduation was also a huge success. I did put the um recording on there for you if you guys wanted to see that. Other great things, positive office referrals, we were able to make our two hundred mark. Other great things, positive office referrals, we were able to make our two-hundred mark this year for positive office referrals, which was pretty darn good. Since we started, I think in November, I started late this year with that, so I made it. So we did a staff inflatable race, um, which the kids really liked. And then we did, uh, dance afterwards with that. So there's everybody with that, it was a good time. And then, um, Miss Miller asked if we make it to two-hundred and fifty before they end of school, can students pile you in the base? And I said, sure, why not? Um, and I don't know if it worked harder to earn that, the students or the teachers, but I think they were all working together. The last week of school, I had, you know, ten at a time coming to my desk, like, oh, you are all working together, um, which was good. Kids, kids like that. So awards day, um, we did awards for, um, art, safety patrol, outstanding for the social people, student council, physical education, and then also the grade farewell took place on that last day. So, um, definitely May was a whirlwind I was not expecting. I thought it was busy, was the director learning in previous, uh, position, but no, nothing is, but it's busy. It's something in a school, yes, so, yeah. Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right.
I think it's once a month inflatable classes.
Those were the.
It was so fun. It's absolutely spring, and it's so fun. Um, my, my update, we talked, I think we, we had a meeting, um, after graduation last time in the year, we talked about the, the senior events. Um, and as we wrap up, some of you may have received a, um, received a Sky Alert and a new report card. We're finding that if we change classes midterm and they weren't entered correctly, Sky Alert then gave them an eighth of a credit, which is, um, something that we hadn't seen before. So, and of that abundance of caution, we reran the report cards to make sure that everything was, was correct. And what we are doing moving forward with Ms. Miller taking a new position, we have a new, um, counselor, is trying to really figure out who does what. You know, when I started, Casey started as well. And it was, well, Ms. Laughlin does these things, but then they were going to try to house all of transcripts and Sky Alert buttons and things that needed to be inputted, um, in the, in the counselor office. So we have more of, um, kind of a more uniform approach. And so there's not so many cooks in the kitchen. Because Samantha can figure out one thing and then Casey figures out something else and then, and now Jacob's in the mix trying to figure out this. And it's just a lot of people and I don't know, we all have the same information. So going forward, that's one of our goals. Um, which is, again, to the point of why, why we made that a Sky Alert. Um, we want to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction and we have the same information. Um, we did summer school this year, face, like, if an eighth or twelfth were invited to participate in, and five were actively participating. And that's kind of remediation, that's not JB's big summer school program. But as Brenda Johnson and I have talked before, and I think this year was, was another, you know, it was illustration of this. Our students that struggle, um, sitting in a room for three and a half hours online, uh, in a, in a self-contained kind of program in a room, it, it just doesn't, it's not the best format for them. You know, we saw more behavior issues, more attempting to escape and avoid and, um, more this summer than we have in the past. And again, taking those, probably the most, some of the most needy learners who've struggled during the year and putting them in a format that is basically, um, kind of self, it's, you have to be motivated and you're unknown and, um, that's a struggle. So going forward, it's going to be something that we need to talk about as a team, what that model looks like. Because if we let teams that are already credit deficient, putting them into a situation where they're not going to be successful, that's not, that's not the best for them. So know that that is not in regard. Um, we are waiting to get our forward data and we do have FastBridge, but we're waiting for, um, the forward is in, we don't have the official data file yet, but waiting to see how we did on that. Um, graduation, we did a question come up about graduation and Ms. Wilson and I met, had met with the seniors and they gave us the resulting, we'd like to go back to Saturday. They had some positives about Friday night, but really wanted to go back to that traditional Saturday, so that's what we did. So they had, we're working on hiring, I'm sure you asked that question, staffing. We are hiring Ms. Wolf's position also on Monday. We had four candidates that were interested in that job. And we have had one candidate for seventh and eighth ELA that is from the United States. We have had two from the Philippines and one from Cameroon who have applied. Right now we are choosing to, to interview the candidate from the United States first. We do, we are.
It's expanded. So we use.
We're running along on that.
We use WeCam and WeCam has the ability, when you apply, you can automatically apply. So there is a host of teachers, and it's the running joke, um, that when districts have an open position, people from the Philippines and these very remote areas have applied. And so, no, we're not discriminating, um, we're simply, these people either don't exist or if they do, um, they won't come here for it here.
We do have, there, um, Durand, Arkansas is a district that has hired, um, they did hire a Spanish teacher from the Philippines, I think, if I'm correct. So they, there was a real person and we, sometimes we wonder, um, they went through the process of getting that person approved and did hire them. Struggling with classroom management, although fluid, fluent in the language, kind of those things that it takes to be a teacher here, we do struggle with that. And so it is a conversation, some, sometimes we, um, we're not sure if they're real people and how this process goes, but they did go through that process and some positives and some struggles. So, um, I've now had one from Cameroon before, so it's interesting. Um, we are having, we're doing a little bit different, we're excited. Matt, Ram and Bandy came to me and said, you know, how about we try to, they're going to implement general music for the students, so it's either band choir, band choir or general music. And on those opposite days, if you are not in one of those, you'll be in PE. So our middle school students will have, um, PE at least two days a week all year, which is what they need if you know middle school students. So we're working on scheduling, working on staffing. And, um, some of our core content teams are working together this summer to align what they do. Most of the teams have had new members in the last couple of years, so they're working together to identify standards and make sure that they are, um, they all have the same expectations and that our Wisconsin State standards are going to hit. So that is my, my update. Chuck, any good questions?
Come on, guys, give us some good questions.
It's okay, you don't, sorry.
RTI in middle school?
What we've been doing really is catching the kids that weren't in that process before. That should have, in, in, you know, a good RTI model, there are very, very few kids that should be identified in sixth grade.
Yes, sure.
They should have already been. And so if a student is a move-in, you know, we have a.
I was going to say, sometimes it's not our fault.
Yeah, yes. But working to, um, those kids now that are coming to us in sixth grade have been through, um, some of them have been through an intervention process.
Were already, are in process, so they'll continue.
And our schedule right now is going to be, is going to incorporate those kids that we know are going to need to start an intervention right away. So it's a continuation of this RTI.
And that's kind of been, you know, starting at my level and then working through, you know.
Suppose that.
Because there's catch-up.
That probably poses some different challenges because of the schedule that they are moving? Is there a?
It does.
I, I, I think I know what was, it was called this year, but there, there was a special hour.
When.
When.
Probably time.
Um.
Yep.
Is that something like they go to intervention there, when time or something like, do they have their RTI, but potentially?
Yes.
Yeah. Does that change as they get older? Is a tier three still a tier three if you're in eighth grade, where you, yeah?
We had, we had a couple of students that were in, that had come to us, I had a student that came in ninth or tenth grade, very credit deficient, but had some pretty significant reading needs. And I had two staff members doing a reading intervention with that student, um, other grade student. So it does, it, it's the same, um, same process.
And it, yeah, and you're just, yeah, and you're, you're just doing it whatever level they are. And oftentimes, if they're really struggling, we'll see an eighth grader who, you know, their instructional levels weren't great.
Yeah.
You know, um, so, yeah.
Chuck, you're carrying the questions, nice job tonight.
You're hurt.
Okay, are we good? Ready, move on? Okay. Business action, okay. Item A, GCSD twenty-five, twenty-six, eCampus and GCHS Spanish.
All right, so, um, this is one of the reasons we changed this section to business action items and discussion. There is no action that needs to take place. Ms. Birch and I are going to run through, um, you know, I'm excited about our, our model change because we've been talking at you for roughly one hour and a half and you're like, shut up and let us go, but.
Chuck's got more questions.
I, I.
No, no.
She's getting more good.
He's just getting more good.
So, because this is the part where you should have heard some of these things at least two, three times. So I'm going to just kind of cut to the chase, um, and then encourage you to ask questions because especially this first one is a major change for us. Let's do a backwards design. In the end, uh, we're going to ask, uh, two things. Number one, eCampus, we want a opportunity to, um, allow students to take online courses here and not lose them. You're going to hear me say in, uh, the budget update later, um, on the business section, not only did we have to increase, well, we lost out on a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of open enrollment funds in addition to what the budget was set. The state is now recommending that that number increase. And so next year projected, we are looking at one point two million going out of the district to open enrollment and six hundred and roughly twenty thousand coming in. Those are big numbers. So with that said, one way we are trying to encapsulate, um, at least some of those students is offering an eCampus. Ms. Birch did a fantastic job. If you click on this one, this handbook and put together, um, there's a lot of different conversations that took place, a lot of different experiences. I did some of this in my previous district. Ms. Birch has done a lot of legwork to get to this point. So basically, we're looking at, if you give us the thumbs up to proceed with, um, GCSD eCampus, which allows us to offer online capabilities, to take classes. It does not allow us to open up a charter school, um, or open enrolled students, uh, to attend this eCampus. But if you look at the handbook that Ms. Birch created, there's an application process, um, there is, uh, an IEP process. If it's special education, this is how you would register, um, it's very well put together. So, um, before we move on to the Spanish part, is there any questions on the eCampus? We've been talking about this topic for a while now. And again, our hope is to take the open enrollment part. We are losing students to like EPC. We also are in a situation where the traditional setting just doesn't work for a student. And so we put all this together into one. So I'm just going to kind of open it up to questions. The biggest driver behind this is a software, um, and curriculum called Edmenta. And, um, Ms. Birch kind of vetted a host of different options. And I set up a call with her and the different groups last week. And I've heard other schools, um, you know, checking references, recommendations, things like that, um, and it all checks out. So, um, basically, uh, we're looking for the thumbs up, not a formal approval of moving forward with an eCampus opportunity for leniency.
It might say in there, was it just for high school?
Right, no.
Yeah, hold on.
Um, I think a couple of important points are that there is not, uh, the real school, there is not yet a point where you really, where you hand a student a Chromebook and go, we'll, we'll see you at the end of the year. That's not what this is and that's not what good education is and what it looks like. Um, we do have students that for a variety of reasons, you know, don't like trends in the hallway or struggle with the bigger classes. So this is in, in our minds, um, a way to slow roll this process, a way to have more of a hybrid model where if you do like PE and you want to go out for PE class, but then you take a couple, two, three courses online, you have a staff member who is assisting you, monitoring you, making sure that you're completing your work and making those connections with you. So there is, the reason there's an application process, process, and there is, um, a clearly laid out procedure for how to enroll and the things that we need to identify is because we still, there still are kids and we still need that contact with them and that adult guidance. We still need to do college and career planning. And so this is a way to offer more opportunities as opposed to that just, here you go, we're going to put you in an online class and then we're going to try to, you know, it's, it's opening up more online class options for students with a, a staff member and more, um, kind of rules surrounding the program.
I think one of the biggest things that's always asked, um, when I was designing this program in Richmond, it always came back to staffing, do you have an individual that can oversee the program? Which leads to our second conversation, um, is the Spanish part. Ms. Birch and I sat down within the sand or verbally on, um, right out of winter and said, you know, a full-time Spanish teacher in a school of seven hundred or a high school of a hundred eighty just doesn't, it, it's not feasible. And we've done some different transitions, adding the CTE, individual and so forth. We had that conversation, um, which I think possibly led to her resignation that you approved tonight. But again, our job is to use our resources in a productive way. After we had those conversations, it was an understanding that half her day was for Spanish and the other half was going to be for this eCampus. And that's kind of where things were left. We had conversations where she, um, was looking for a different position, um, and then all of a sudden it came to fruition, um, last two weeks ago. So with that said, there is the eCampus handbook, the thought that we were trying to do, but it does come down to, do you have a staff member? Well, now we have a hole in our, um, budget in terms of a full-time FTE. So with that, we do have a plan in terms of a staff member to oversee this eCampus, which is what Ms. Birch, it's not where you can, uh, Chromebook and say, good luck. We actually have a certified staff member, um, and the person we have in mind for this actually has worked with us. We're both big fans of this person because they have filled in for us in a great capacity, but we'll open it up. But again, it's that hybrid model. We still have oversight, we still have process, we still have procedures. I think COVID opened this door. And it's not a bad thing, but you also have students that know whether they want to work or whether they have, whatever their reason for doing this platform. That's what the process in, in terms of application will be. So with that said, that's part, one part of the discussion that we have today. Is there any questions specifically about the eCampus?
I do, I think I've asked it before, but I just wanna clarify, if you are living in the school district and now we offer this, can they not do it with another? Cause like you said, we're not open enrolling or taking open enrollments, right? So is other campuses like that as well? So if they're currently open enrolling with E P C, now going one opposite, do they have to come to us for that E campus?
You always have a choice of where to go.
I mean, we're for the online version though.
We would like them to?
Like if they are on, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We're not taking open enrolls for these.
Can we, well, you're saying, well, we allow our students to do the same model in another place?
Yes.
Because we do have stu- students open enrolled out.
Yeah.
We couldn't deny the open enrollment out?
Because of how we offer it, is what I'm saying. You know what I mean? We have an online version.
But we can't, we're, we're not required.
I don't, I've never, I've never denied it. I've always fundamentally believed that, you know what, it's, it's parent choice. I'm not a fan of the model, sure, I ju- I hate the program because it takes away months from public education. But in the same regard, a parent should be able to choose where they want to go.
Right, but I think a lot of them chose because we didn't have that option here, is what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Right?
And I hope it's, don't be that they, they.
That they come here.
Yeah, that they know.
Well, he, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They also have the opportunity to participate in sports, um, W I.
Right, right, cause you can't.
So we had, we had individuals that were, were taking online classes outside of our district and they wanted to participate, but they couldn't.
Right.
So this thing is multifaceted in terms of it's our kids, we wanna offer the online piece. We wanna give Ms. Birch flexibility to offer one of these classes because maybe it's not working out or whatever the case. Uh, we want these kids to participate. Um, I think right now from a budgetary standpoint, I pressed Ms. Birch and said, give me a number, like how many? Because you have to pay by the seat and she set that at fifteen. You know, in her mind, there's fifteen students that fall into this type of category. Some of them already exist, others of them exist by going to other schools. So we're trying to, to bring that in. It's very similar to the summer month, or, right, we're gonna put, kind of tip our toe into it and see where this takes us.
We get the same dollar amount for them if they're open enrolled with E campus versus in person?
No.
From state line, no.
Well, yes, here, but we're losing out on those students.
But it doesn't matter.
It does not matter. They are our students, they're in our system.
But right now, because it is not, uh, it is not a charter, it's not a separate entity, we are not taking students like from Spring Valley that want to enroll again. We're not there yet.
Correct.
But if we have those students that want to come back, that reside in our district, this is a, this is, this is a vehicle.
And it could lead to that point where we, you know, acquire charter status, which then allow us to take kids from Milwaukee to or Columbia.
Right, right.
So can a, can a E learning student participate in some classes here?
Mm-hmm.
A hybrid type, whether it's a C T E or band or whatever?
Yep, absolutely. And that's, that is, that's our hope. Because I am a firm believer in the human connection and the more that we pull back from that, the kind of skills that we may lose. And so my hope is that those students, whether it's one elective, maybe it's two, you're still having that connection with peers and staff, but you have the option of taking four.
Well, I could, I could see that that being a good choice for some kids. I would always, I would encourage you at some point, um, it's always interesting, um, I used to tell my board this. Go sit in the, the, uh, the seating area of the high school office and see how much kids leave and come at different times of the day. It's truly like the college campus. The years of where, you know, every kid starts and, and then they end the day, those are gone. I mean, we have kids going in and out, um, all the time. And not where, you know, they're either working, they're going to classes outside, off-campus, they're doing, you know, so that, again, we're, we're changing with the times and this is just another piece of that. Will their, the full-time staff be their homeroom teacher or will they have a separate homeroom teacher?
That, um, is yet to be determined because we have, it, it hinges on the Spanish conversation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's a resounding success, is there some limit that we would say, we only have enough staff to support a hundred or two hundred or whatever the class number might be?
If it's a resounding success, um, I would say that we would have our students that are open and rolled out returning, which then brings that funding back to the building, which means we can hire more staff. So the sky's the limit in terms of what we can do if we have, you know, students, whether we like it or not, students have a dollar amount tied to them. And should we be able to bring enough students back and offer a program that is successful and is showing success for these kids, um, I would see that we could have more staff that are in that program.
I would encourage you to look at Sacred Central. Um, if you look at the amount of staff that they have to, um, run this type of program at Saint Croix Central, it's, it's, it's pretty alarming. Um, I think the one thing that we can't lose sight of, and Ms. Birch touched on already, is that human connection. There's check-ins processes here. If you look at the handbook, this is not where you just take a course and then at the end, you know, cause if, if you fail this course, your parents will pay you back. And for a student, that's the oversight. That's why we need a certified staff member, um, to oversee this, to do those check-ins. Hey, you're twenty percent behind, you need to do this, 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 and if it's not happening, parents are called in, you're meeting and so forth. Because, you know, and again, I don't know what the amount is just yet, but can you get, imagine getting that bill? Um, and we do it now. If you take a, a post-secondary's class and you fail it, you're paying for it. And that can be a three hundred dollar cost that is, is a surprise for a family. And that, that's a, that's a big surprise.
Is it, when you say alarming, is it alarming on the high side that they have?
Very, yeah. If you look at their staff for the Sacred Central. And one of the things that I, I was always frustrated is, you know, it's a charter status, so they, there was kids kicked out all the time for they didn't fulfill an assignment. And they could kick them out for that. Um, but it's, it's, it's really interesting to see how much staff they have just to run this program. And they get kids from everywhere.
The reason that that online connection or that human, you know, the overseer, the person, that connection is important is because we have had, um, quite a few students that come to us from various online platforms, um, schools, programs that are significantly behind in credits because they were in an online program. And they were allowed to take six classes that they didn't do. And now I have a, a super senior that came to us with ten credits or something. So trying to build a program where there still is a significant amount of oversight so that we don't have students in, you know, they end up dropping out because I'm nineteen and all of my classmates are gone. So how do we make a program that there still are those checks and balances and they are not allowed to fail for so long? So, um, and Mr. Sawe is the principal of E P C's online academy. And that their magic number to run that program is twenty-five students. And that makes, and that pays for the staff, it pays for, um, the program, whatever platform you use, whether it's Edmentum or Southwest. Um, that's, that's the number. So if this is a wild success and we have many, many students coming back or rejoining us, um, you know, keep that number in your head because that's what it, kind of what it takes to be, to add staff, to, to be in the, the black.
And my number was twenty-seven in Richmond to be able to, but this is, that was through a different program. I should put on to that, um, Jamie was a big help because Coverland has an existing program like this. Um, so we used her expertise to, um, we came to developing this outline. I don't know if you can add anything, Jamie?
No, we just always saw it as a way to keep students with us. We didn't wanna lose students to outline districts because of virtual education or different things like that. So it was just a way for us to keep the students and to meet their needs within the district for us, so.
So the second part of this conversation is Spanish, um, and I kind of set the stage already. Um, so, um, Ms. Birch put together, um, this summary, um, so basically it comes down to, um, how are we gonna offer Spanish here in Plum City? Um, the E campus right now would be like a part-time position. Uh, and then the other side of that would be Spanish, which would then equal out an one F T, which we have, um, budget-wise. So, um, if you look at the options, and I just said to Ms. Birch, I said, you know, put all of the, we, we had a variety of different discussions. Um, I had them with superintendents, she had them with building principals, um, and then she put together, uh, this chart. So I'm gonna let her start and I'll just add in, um, as we go here.
Basically, we have three viable options. The first one is all of those students that are interested in Spanish would be enrolled in Wisconsin Virtual School. That's a platform that we use right now that offers us, um, Wisconsin licensed teachers. It is a completely asynchronous course. What that means is our students would have, you know, headphones in, they're watching the lesson, they're doing the lesson. It would be at a time, a specific time in their schedule. For instance, if I want Spanish one, I, you might walk by the high school computer lab for a second or you've got a whole classroom of students doing their online course. Now, the, the positives, I guess it's a cost-effective, um, or more cost-effective. The drawbacks would be that we're, um, we have a staff member to monitor their progress, but it's an asynchronous language course and that's tough. Um, the second option is that we do have Plum City, there's a licensed Spanish teacher that is willing to zoom in with our kids or our kids to zoom in with their Spanish classes. Their Spanish one and two in their schedule right now is close-ish to our schedule. Um, you asked about homeroom, Chuck, and, and the difference I think would be that, that, that Spanish class, that Spanish class would have to start at eight A M. Right now, our homeroom starts at eight A M. So those Spanish students would start their day at eight and go to eight fifty and then they have their twenty-minute homeroom and get back on the bell schedule. It doesn't work as cleanly for Spanish two, but it is, it's a live person and live instruction. We would, as a district, um, do an agreement with them and pay that Spanish teacher for taking that overload. We would have a licensed staff or a staff in the room, it wouldn't happen with a licensed staff, but we'd have a staff in the room to monitor our students while they are participating in that student class. And so those, you know, when you asked if the, if that homeroom teacher would be the online student's teacher, maybe some, but in this model that, you know, our staff member would have to have those Spanish students in their homeroom because their homeroom would be at a different time than everyone else's homeroom. So for Spanish one, it works well-ish. For Spanish two, which would be second hour, it's a little bit different. And so we have to work together because they kind of, the classes overlap. They don't, they don't match our bell schedule as, as much. And so how that looks and how she structures it, I think, you know, I have faith that we can do it. They did that, they did this with Elmwood a couple of years, or Elsworth a couple of years back, um, in agreement like this. And so that would be, you know, at minimum seven thousand. Uh, they did sixty-five hundred for one class before, so she would be taking an overload of two classes. And that'd be all year. So it, it's a cost. Um, the, the third and final option is that Edmentum is this, this platform that we're using for our online students. It is, um, it offers us the option to have three times a week, four or five times a week, one of their Spanish teachers match our schedule and zoom in with our students and do the lessons. So they are a Wisconsin licensed teacher that zooms in with us. And you can see the cost is, is pretty high, um, for them. So those right now are what, what we do have as options. Um, I guess what we did not say is that we've been forced for a point two Spanish teacher and the chances that you have that, um, someone out there that wants to come and match our schedule and, and work for point two is, we, we know that that's probably not a viable option.
So this resignation came to us and again, Ms. Birch and I have been having these discussions all spring. Um, but then we didn't think it was a viable possibility. Uh, when it did come, I talked to the superintendents and again, I did learn through this process that the Dunce Croix, um, suits and principals have been working over the years to try and match up those schedules, um, because these situations are gonna come up. They're gonna come up more. You know, we talk about S L P, we talk about Spanish, C T E. Um, people are not going into teaching like they used to. So these are, this is just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, with that said, Clear Lake is in the same boat and, uh, Chris and I have already said, yes, let's talk for next year, maybe there's a fifty percent Clear Lake Spanish teacher and a fifty percent Clear Lake teacher. So right now, we're looking at this as a possible Band-Aid for one year. Um, the other thing I will say is Spanish has changed, especially during COVID. Um, there's a variety of colleges that, colleges that got off the Spanish train in terms of requiring it for entry. Um, some of them, you know, even with A C T, we're not gonna look at A C T now, some of it's reverting back. But Spanish is not as much of a requirement. Um, the only schools that, um, Jimmy, you said.
I feel like Madison.
Madison.
That require it.
And the U of Elm is the other one, but like a variety of these others. So we also have, we have nineteen kids in Spanish one, we have.
Oh, you have three in Spanish two. Um, I think there's three students in Spanish, three and one in Spanish four.
And I think it's safe to say Spanish in three and four, you know, we'll just go online and that's their way to advance that. But we're concerned with this in Spanish one and two. And one of the points that I wanna bring up is this past year, we just weren't ready to make a decision. Um, so what we did was we utilized Amanda and did Spanish immersion, which is great, but that's not a need. That's a, that's a want. Um, it's a great program, don't get me wrong. And it allowed Jamie to have more of a P L C model, um, to put it in rotation. But our plan is, is that we're now gonna use, um, Angela Williams and teach, uh, library media, um, skill sets, uh, in, to that rotation. And then Amanda, at the time, is gonna focus in on E campus and then her Spanish. So now we're sure to teach her and so what we just heard is our, is our plan. So, uh, what I need from you guys is, I hear that E campus is something that we're, yep, we're ready. So we'll bring that to you in July. The Spanish part is what we need direction on.
So when I was in Spanish four, I actually tapped and did that as, with Spanish one and twos and I think that that could be a really good option for your Spanish three and four students to have that opportunity to help us in our, whatever model we choose, but I think if we get it where there wasn't an actual teacher, that would be a great option for them.
It is. It is provided it works in their schedule.
Right, exactly.
But it's, um, you know, one of those students is, is fluent.
Yeah.
Which is already just.
Yes, it was so helpful.
So you're fluent in Spanish?
No, I was like, what am I doing? Sounds like, sounds like, ew. No, but I think, I think if we could look at that option, I mean, at that Spanish four, even the threes.
And if they're taking Spanish three and four, they're pretty versed.
Yeah.
And taking online Spanish is gonna be very doable. Spanish one and two, that's a difference.
Doable, but I mean, to have that hands-on person to help these people, if they, if we decide to go on an online without a teacher, you have your Spanish three and four students that are gonna be excellent resources for these guys to have.
Well, and that's, uh, utilizing that language, I mean. And that's uh utilizing that language. I mean, that's what we got them to do. So it did.
So with the uh virtual school, there still is a teacher somewhere.
Uh, with Wisconsin Virtual School?
Yes.
It's like pre-recorded lessons.
Yes, pre-recorded lessons.
Yeah.
So.
So you're referring to the first one?
Yes, so. And like somebody's grading things or they're submitting assignments?
They're submitting assignments. I'm not sure, did you ever see Brenna do her, can I say?
Sign language?
Yes, it's that, Chuck. It's what that looks like. The students are watching that, then they're either uploading videos.
Okay, I was gonna say, so she uploads videos and goes in sign language, so they.
Yes.
Would potentially be uploading videos of them speaking Spanish, or, or they would be.
It is graded.
It's graded in their submissions.
Yes, it is graded by their staff.
If they aren't just watching videos, they are.
They're submitting work and being upset, being obsessed. Yes.
But then there would be a.
Cause that's possible.
Whole-time certified teacher sitting in a room at the time.
Okay, so that's not as.
But they may not know Spanish.
They're just not.
No, yeah, certified meaning they're a teacher, they might be certified as math, not Spanish.
Whatever. Unless children.
Professional Spanish.
Not a Spanish teacher.
What, if we went with Wisconsin Virtual School, what I could see potentially happening? Because all of our students in a Spanish one are at that same level. There's not a reason other, we have to pay for them, each and every one of them to take that course. They also individually need to submit their own work. So every single kid in that class has to submit that work. There's nothing saying that we can't start with the lesson, so everybody's got the same lesson. We're all watching it here. There's no reason that you couldn't put that on a large board. And we watch this, the teacher watches this, the teacher maybe learn Spanish at the same time, but we're all watching that lesson together. Then the kids go and submit their work. So there is the option that way to do some group work. You know, Chuck is enrolled in Spanish one, we're all enrolled in Spanish one. Well, we put that lesson up on the board, cause we're all on the same lesson, and we do it together as a group. It's just that we need to have all of the students enrolled and pay for that course.
Yeah. See, so it seems like the, the driver for Spanish is the fact that colleges require it for entrance.
But not Spanish, a foreign language.
A foreign language, a foreign language.
Foreign language, yes, it's Spanish.
Yeah, but Spanish is kind of the most popular.
And it's what they register for because it's what we had offered.
Sure, sure.
If I put, if I put Mandarin Chinese on there as the option that we require it, that's what they would, that's what they would.
It's our language, secondary language. Is sign language considered?
Secondary language.
Second, second. So it's secondary language, so did you ASL that's the second?
Cause they can do ASL.
Okay, okay, I was gonna say.
It's controversial, Jamie.
It is, well.
Cause ASL speakers do have their own sort of culture.
Well, it's American, but.
Yeah.
Talk to them.
The main thing is it's not limited to Spanish.
It's not limited, it's.
It's not limited.
Yeah.
So if that's the driver and schools are getting away from it, do we have, sorry, I'm a statistics guy. Do we have the statistics of how many students who entered in Spanish one moved on to a college that required it? I mean, that, that would be almost an accident interview type of thing to see just exactly what the ROI is on us offering Spanish. Of course, we wanna offer it. If a student wants to take it, we should have it available, but at what level do we make it available?
You, unless you did a postgraduate survey, we would not have that, that data.
Although you do, when students are getting ready to go to college, they kind of have a college in mind. Um, so they kind of know what the requirements are.
There's a, I would say, based on remembering. Students, you know, maybe sixty percent actually followed through. Um, you know, they at the grad party, I'm going here, or I'm doing this, and then things change.
I think a, a better even point of research is how many colleges, you know, we've mentioned two that we think we know. Doing that research on how many colleges are actually requiring it, you know, how many local colleges.
It seems like we're spending a lot of time on trying to decide what we can spend on Spanish. And we don't even know what we really need to spend on a second language course.
I think that at this point, because there are still colleges that are requiring it. Um, it is something, whether it's Spanish or, or another language, it's something that we do need to have available.
It would have to be a phased-out type of.
Sure.
Princesses, Scott, I absolutely. I just mention this to anybody who will listen. If you want a blue-collar job, you should learn Spanish.
Well, of course.
That's what I think, it's more important for those type of students, but they don't necessarily understand, but you know what I'm saying.
No, I understand. It's not a, it's not a question of, you know, what language it is. It's just how much time will we be spending on it, how much money are we deciding to put into it? And is it something that the students really need? If it is, great.
Well, absolutely.
Or do we use an e-learning model like we're coming up with and say, this is not one of our e-learning. Offers that we put in that students can apply for and then they're the ones.
Or, or it's like you, this hour is going to be foreign language and you choose whatever one you wanna do.
From our online offering?
Yeah, you know, because I, I would say that it can be a part of a well-rounded education.
True, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I think that's why you, you try to make it a priority, not necessarily for the college thing, just to be.
And I think this also speaks, I mean, we're basically cutting Spanish from one point oh to point five. So we're already making that jump, signifying that we have a hundred eighty kids in our high school. We don't need a one point oh. So where it goes from here, yep, we'll have that data to be able to track.
And I guess that's why I wanna make a distinction on Spanish versus just a single world language, but. So on that third option, because the first two, I think we're kind of committed to Spanish itself. The third option, could we have kids in French and Spanish and Mandarin?
In Wisconsin Vir, Wisconsin Virtual School has a bunch of course offerings as well that, that they have different languages.
Would, but in that case, would they all be sitting next to each other with their headphones on and one learning Mandarin and the other one learning Spanish?
Yes. Um, in theory, they wouldn't have to, they would just need a spot in their day. That they have an online course. And we have that happening throughout the day.
Are you, are you talking at Mentum?
That's the one I was referring to, is that I thought was our only option, but it sounds like one would also support multiple different languages.
Okay.
Yeah, it does. Yes.
But it sounded, I don't.
Unless I could teach one doesn't.
Yeah, but I thought we needed the teacher to be there for the assessment. So how would we do that if it was throughout the day?
Um, if you are, if you are doing something like Wisconsin Virtual School, that is graded on their end. And then kicked back.
Okay.
Um, there isn't the need to have that, some of the course where like Edmentum can be self-grading. Um, yield terms, written work in and, you know, honestly, the bot probably checks it or it's checkboxes and it's calculated. Um, some of those, like Wisconsin Virtual School, there is a live teacher somewhere that is grading that and then kicking it back. It may not be right then, but it is within a day too. So you have a running grade.
If you're, and correct me if I'm wrong, if yours is talking, um, cause this is where I'm hearing you guys, your discussion is like. We, we're more interested instead of just Spanish world language. And if that's the case, then. Three won't, number two wouldn't work.
Right.
Number three wouldn't work either because Edmentum in our presentation said. You will have a live Spanish teacher two to three times a week. And again, now you're kind of pigeon-pulled into a Spanish teacher. So if, if the board is talking about, we're looking at a world language and we have a spot for you, we have a certified teacher. When I say professional teacher, it's a teacher to help. Um, they're not Spanish or world certified, but they're a teacher that that's their profession. And then I might have two kids in Spanish, three kids in French, I got a kid in um sign language.
Latin, French, German, ASL, Chinese.
For virtual academy?
This is, yeah, Wisconsin Virtual School offers.
Without getting the input from all, I feel like that's the best option, though we can broaden it out to that, you know, and. I mean, you're surveying, I have people here that.
We were often times in Richmond, uh, we would, even, even as large as we were. Um, we would do the sixty-six oh three with Somerset because they had the sign language program. And that was for PT OT. Um, that was seen to be a popular piece. So if that's in direction and that's kind of what I'm hearing from you guys is. Let's do away with such a, a specific world language and open it up. Um, and we have a staff member oversee it and then they can choose from whatever.
They can also choose Spanish.
They can, they can.
What I, what I don't wanna lose sight of is that, um, and my recommendation would be to trial this for a year. I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that not everyone um can be successful online and language is hard. And so if this is, you know, um, if this is a, a direction and I like the direction, I like the option of multiple different languages. But I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that some of our learners might be a person. And so I think if, if we do go this direction, um, we need to come back together and monitor the effectiveness. Of these offerings. What were the grades? How many credits were obtained? How many did not do well or decided to drop? Because that's going to tell us if, you know, if we can continue.
And that will lead to the, the, the other discussion of do we partner with a Clear Lake, you know, fifty? Cause if we posted a fifty percent, you know, that's where Ms. Birch said, it's, it's, we wouldn't find anybody. So this is where we try to problem solve at least for a year.
Does it seem like the students that are taking this, the Spanish or the English or the uh, the other languages? They're a little more driven towards learning that because they're learning it for a reason?
I think that's where we're at now.
Sure.
Yes, which is why we have nineteen instead of a whole class of fifty. And that's why there's nineteen. Those are the ones.
Well, I think a lot of them thought they had to take it too, and now they're learning more so that these colleges don't let them require them.
And you also have, I mean, my son's in that, in that boat. He ended up not taking Spanish. Cause he just, uh, he doesn't know where he wants to go. He's like, I'd rather take this than, and if I had to take Spanish, I'll take it when I get there. Um, now, does that say you can't, you won't get in if you apply? Cause some of these schools say you need to have it just to apply. So every kid is a little bit different, you know, in their path.
Like I, I like the idea. I like that we've come up with an option that wasn't on the list. I think that's great. That's what we should be doing. Um, but, you know, we'll have to watch it.
So I'm, what, what the next step is, is I am going to write up a true recommendation. Um, based on what we heard tonight. Number one, E-Campus, hiring a staff member. Um, and then the second part is, is I'm looking at option one for Spanish. But more so year toward, now, that's the thing that we, we have nineteen students that are currently registered for Spanish. So when these kids come in the fall, that's what they're expecting to take.
And they still can't look at.
They can, yep.
They can, but. I guess my question would be, now are you going to pull them together on day one and say, wow? You don't have to have Spanish, you can have Mandarin Chinese now if you want.
Well, I think a phased idea because it's already promised is not a bad thing. We don't have to do everything today or even this fall. We can look at it, we can test it, we can see how it works. And in two years, it could be implemented. But we're looking that far down the road. But for this year, it's kind of set. We have nineteen students, they're expecting Spanish. We should move toward getting them the Spanish that they were promised. And then phase the other parts in, test it and see if it works. If it does, great, if it doesn't.
Okay, so you guys are picking basically option one, knowing that Ms. Birch can expand it, we'll have a further conversation down there. Okay, so you will see those, we're gonna work on everything right now. Um, do I, uh, do we have a permission to move forward with interviewing the certified staff member position to oversee? Cause then we will have that name to you for approval. You okay with that?
We're doing that as well.
Okay, that will be part of the recommendation then. All right.
All right, uh, item number B, G C J S C T incentive grant summer.
Okay, some of these, uh, again, um, I know how antsy kids get and adults are worse, actually, um, sitting there for hours. So I'm gonna do an overview, um, and then, uh, again, you have access to this information. Every year, I like to update the board when it comes, especially with this graph right here. Um. Or the table. So if you look at the class of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and so forth. And basically this could show. What is the CTE incentive grant if you're not aware of it? This is where we have students that are a, a list that they can go and get certified in. If you look at what this offers our kids, they walk away with specific certifications, whether it's ag. Uh, business, health science, family consumer marketing, um, the, the. It's all over. And I think this is a growing program because it's a resume builder. And um, I always wanna make sure that the board is updated, that this, number one, this program exists through the departmental workforce. Number two, there is an incentive for the district that in terms of financial incentive. But more importantly, there's an incentive for these kids. So if you look at what Ms. Johnson has done over her three years here. Three years. Four, okay, first, and this was, um, it wasn't submitted, I, I'm not sure why.
It, that was the year that I turned.
Okay, so Ms. Birch started late, um, that year.
On July.
So, um, but if you look at where the, we have three certificates and now we're up to nineteen. That is, that's awesome, because these kids are walking away with a true certification, a resume builder. Uh, and a thing to take to their employer and say, look what I have done. Uh, based, uh, in addition to my diploma. So again, um, everything is right there if you wanna update more. But I would encourage you at some point to just click on this um link and look at these certifications. Because there's a lot of opportunities out there.
How are they made aware of your program?
Um. The, the staff members have to implement the program to get the students. So every year, I sit down with the CTE staff and say, here's the list of approved certifications. It changes slightly from year to year. Sarah Johnson, um, almost uses YA, uh, youth apprenticeship students. Those certifications are primarily YA. Um, two years ago, we had Ryan Mabey who did Ferguson Stratton. He did small engine, so, so there was some certifications that, that following year, um, because it, it. You record it the year after. We've had, I think. Two or three students achieve their CNA. That's another certification where we can earn money from the state of Wisconsin. These are primarily. They are under youth apprenticeship and then youth apprenticeship funnels them into a certain lane. So if I've got a student working at a restaurant, they're in youth apprenticeship, but they are in that, um, hospitality tourism lane. And so that's the certification that they get. They are proving that they've got those work-based skills in hospitality. So primarily, that number is the growth of, of YA. Um, but I just sat, actually I sat with Ms. Yolby today because she's our, will be our business and marketing teacher. And I showed her the certifications. We can certify a student in Adobe if we take them through that whole suite of, of products. And then test them out. So the CTE staff looks at what we're doing. And then looks at those certifications and see, you know, we see if that, if they mesh.
And then they sell it in homeroom and other places?
They talk about it in their courses.
And they sell, but in the course, course handbook?
And YA is, yeah, I mean, that is listed in our course handbook.
And then how are they recognized at the conclusion of their certifications?
They are recognized at our awards night. They get a certification and then it's uploaded. That, that is, um, then uploaded to the state of Wisconsin, but they're all recognized at our awards night.
Any questions? All right, um. Drat, do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one is an action item, um, and the, the history behind this is that. If you have heard about impact testing, you probably had a child or know someone that was in athletics. And impact testing was very big, um, in terms of concussion protocols, et cetera. Uh, we are finding another trend right now that came up in, in our discussions as Suits, but also uh with our AD J-Score. And um, based on this, I am recommending. And, um, based on this, I am recommending that we terminate, uh, impact testing, uh, for the reasons that are outlined here. Number one, uh, we, Ms. Burge also had discussions with, um, schools and why they are not using it. We're one of the few schools in the Dunce Croix that still have it. Um, and part of it was, especially as a coach, um, concussion protocols are very important. Uh, but if the medical community is not using them, um, and there's other reasons like kids are manipulating and, and I have seen that. Um, but basically it comes down to where doctors now have their own protocol and they'll just follow up their own personal protocol instead of looking back at this data. So not only do we spend money on impact tests, we have the students come in, take a test. If they get a concussion, they have to go back to the computer, take it. Um, and even in that process, uh, if we've recorded anything for concussions, you know, kids will sit with, um, glasses, sunglasses, because they can't look at a screen or they can't even look at a screen for weeks, et cetera. Yet we're still trying to have them take a test. So with all that information that is in this, I am recommending to the board that we, um, eliminate the impact testing as most of the Dunce Croix currently does. Any questions, anybody?
If I make a motion to eliminate the impact testing?
Same. All right, both of you there, second by Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Close carry. Okay, number D, G C S D, twenty-four, twenty-five district goal summary.
Okay, so with the model that you guys have approved as moving towards, I'm just going to give you the thirty thousand foot view of these two next, um, board items. We do not need action, um, but again, these are things that are going to, we're not just going to be done with it. So the first one is the district goal summary. Um, I have always been, uh, one that I don't care that we have, um, a slogan. Um, if we set district goals, they're going to need something. And we're going to come back, we're going to reflect on and look. So I'm just going to give you, um, a very brief overview of how we did this past year, but that's not going to be the last time that you hear this. So, um, if we go back, here's our strategic plan. Um, I do want to point this out because Chuck, one of your questions, and again, we are, we, we like your guys' questions. Um, it, it's truly, that's what we hear of these meetings. But you use the term triangular. Um, this is something that I've used over the years and it's an inverted triangle that points down to one thing in my work here, and that's kids. Um, you know, we have our core purpose, we have our strategic plan, we have our district goals. That comes down to our building level goals. And I, for one, will tell you, I need to do a better job, um, of overseeing that part of it. We call them SIPs. Um, and that's the building piece. They developed them this year, um, and my normal protocol is to meet with them one time per month. And I truly could not find the time to do that, uh, based on some of those other things that, uh, we've talked about many times.